Well, have Mr. Evans explain what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. And, uh, appreciate everybody being here.
All right, well, Mr. Chairman, we have fourteen appeals tonight. Your book shows fifteen, but we have had a family that's contacted us and they want to withdraw their appeal, and I'll cover that as we get to it. It's number two in your book. Um, as you know, this is a difficult meeting that we have every year. This is not something that we enjoy doing, but, um, you know, we have to have zoning because of our growing county, and, and this is the process that we use to decide when exemptions should occur. Um, I do have a breakdown for you here of the numbers that we have so far this year. I provided you a copy. Uh, Mr. Essers asked me to share this with you tonight. Uh, so far, this is as of Friday of last week, we have eleven hundred and fifty-five applications that have been received and processed this year. Uh, of those, a majority are approved. Eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven were approved, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight were denied. And I have a breakdown for you there of the approvals, just so you can kind of understand those numbers. Uh, about a third of our exemptions are for employees. The board policy allows for employees to take their child to where they live or to where they work or to the school zone where they work. Uh, that's one of the benefits of their employment, so you'll see that four-hundred-and-sixteen applications were for those. Uh, seventy-four were for the IB program at Oakland High School. Uh, thirty-three were for upperclassmen. These are seniors, eighth graders, fifth graders. It's those students who are in their last year of school. As long as the principals agree to it, we typically let them finish out their final year. Uh, twenty-six were for contracts or leases that are pending. That's someone who's moving to another school zone in the middle of the school year, maybe in October or November, but they haven't quite closed yet. We give them a temporary exemption to cover the gap, so their child can start in the new school zone in August instead of having to change in the middle of a year. And we do track those and follow up with them and make sure that they actually do move. Uh, twenty-six were for medical hardship. That's a student medical hardship. There were two that were medical hardships related to the family in general. And then the other two-hundred-and-sixty are for some other reason. Maybe it was a pathway consideration that needed to be completed at one school or a school that wasn't overcrowded. We like it when families can do that. Sometimes that helps us relieve overcrowding at one school if someone voluntarily moves to a non-overcrowded school. Or when principals have, you know, both agree that it's in the best interest of the student, things like that. Are there any questions about the, the, just kind of the statistical numbers there? All right, so the process that we will follow tonight, like I said, we have fourteen families who've been invited tonight to, uh, appeal because they had requested an appeal before the board. Uh, we'll have two, at least two, at next week's school board meeting because they couldn't make tonight because of family plans or something like that. They just couldn't make it, so it'll be on the board agenda next week. Um, the process that we will follow tonight is I will read a short summary of the situation, why it was denied, what school they're requesting, things like that. And then we will ask the parents if they wish to step up and state to you any information that they think you should have. And then the board can ask questions of the staff or the parents, and then hopefully someone will make a motion for a decision one way or the other. The parents will get that immediately, and we will be sent a board order tomorrow for their records. Uh, are there any questions about the process? Uh, Ms. Page is our staff attorney, and she is going to swear in the families tonight that anybody who plans on speaking to the board. Uh, and one important note, you'll notice that we're not mentioning student names in these. And the reason is because this is a public meeting. We're on YouTube and TV and all those things, and, you know, these aren't mine. So I use family names, and we just try to avoid using the actual students' names just to protect their privacy. Ms. Page?
If you are going to testify today, do you raise your right hand? Do you sound as fair or firm as you are about to give us the whole truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
Yes, yes.
Yours, what?
Okay. Our first appeal tonight is the McFarland family. Uh, if they would step up to the podium, please. They are requesting for their child to remain at Riverdale instead of Rockville High School. This is the first one in your packet. Uh, the student is a sophomore. Uh, the mother is a classified employee at Smyrna High School and wants the child to remain at Riverdale because of a transportation hardship. Uh, the student is also a softball player. You guys feel free to go from there.
Thank you. So, the houses on each side of us, the house across the street from us, the house two doors to the left of us have been broken into many times at night while people are living in their house and in the daytime. I personally have called the police on my, uh, on the car parked in front of my yard more than two dozen times. Jeff Jordan's very fortunate to live in the interior of our neighborhood. We live on the exterior of it. What will happen in front of my house is the car will pull up, park, leave the hood up, and they've got car trouble until a little guy on the bicycle drives over from Sandburn Hall condominiums to, uh, hand a package, and all of a sudden the car's fixed, except when the police show up, and then the car gets fixed just fine. Um, our daughter rode the bus for three years during Christiana. Well, she rode the bus for about two years. After the bus was stopped the third time due to fights and, uh, police having to come to the bus, uh, we started making other arrangements. My oldest daughter and her husband live just down the road from Riverdale. My son-in-law works for the city of Murfreesboro. He often starts work at 5:30 in the morning, gets off work at 3:30. So, when my daughter is not having ROTC practice or some other practice at school, uh, he, my son-in-law is picking her up from Riverdale to take her to hi- to his house, and then we, we meet up with him later. We both work full-time. Um, we would like for our daughter to not be on a school bus or us to have to drive eleven miles to, uh, Rockvale to pick her up. She also, we both studied German in college. We both have spent time in Germany in college. Our daughter, um, we had advised her to take German. My, her older sister talked her into taking Spanish her freshman year. When she tried to enroll in German for her sophomore year, she was denied because, uh, Rockvale does not offer that. And she was told because she's zoned for Rockvale, she's not allowed to enroll in any classes at Riverdale. Our daughter is also an athlete. She's very interested in sports science. Um, she tried to enroll in sports science at Riverdale, was not allowed to. Um, we think there's multiple reasons why we should be granted to an exemption, and we'd like you to, you know, wholeheartedly consider it, please. And before the record, I'd just like to say, our daughter has friends that are going to Rockvale. Her best friend at church was a freshman at Blackman in the collegiate program, is thrilled that Rockvale is a new school, gives her a new opportunity. I thought the board might like to hear of a collegiate program enrolled student at Blackman who's excited about going to Rockvale. We're confident that our daughter's gonna thrive wherever she goes. Um, but there are a lot of reasons within our family that we would really like for her to be able to stay at Riverdale.
Any questions? We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think, and I have actually a question before we come to our motions. Mr. McFarland, um, I know in the, in the notes and the things that, that we read, um, understand, you mentioned something about ROTC, but your daughter is also an athlete, right?
Yes. Yes, she, she was enrolled at Riverdale as a ROTC and part of the Raiders program and the softball team as well.
So, I'm guessing most of the times she didn't, she played school later than the, than the average bell time?
Often, often.
She wouldn't be taking a bus home in the afternoons anyway, couldn't start?
On the days that she gets out of school on time is when my son-in-law often picks her up.
Okay. And on the days where she's got practice or has to stay overnight?
Then, then we're available to, 'cause it's later, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Since Mr. McFarland, um, mentioned my name, I appreciate that very much, Mr. McFarland.
Well, we're neighbors, and you do live in the heart of it.
We are. Uh, and I was going to, to say that, really, um, anyway. But, since you mentioned it, uh, I, I thought about, uh, not voting on this motion and, uh, since we were neighbors and, but then I thought, "Well, that's not why they sent me down here, whether, whether I like it or not." I'm, you know, um, so, I, I, I think that I'm going to, I'm going to agree with you on this, um, and I'm, I've, we have known who, who appealed the board since Thursday. So it's not like we've had months to look at this, okay? And we shouldn't have, because the deadline was in April, and, and, and you can see how many that, that, uh, Ms. Evans had to look at, hundreds of them. Uh, but my point is here, you all have known it for two months, and I think it really is a, um, a real tribute to you all that even though we are neighbors and have known each other for, I don't know, how, how long have you lived there? Fifteen years, twelve?
Uh, we moved and moved, we bought that house in two thousand and three.
Two thousand and what?
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three, so, okay. So, uh, and, and, but, you had a perfect opportunity. You could've tried to influence me in any way that you wanted to, and you didn't.
Well, we didn't.
And, and that's fine. I, I, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. We, we're not asking for a special favor, and I don't take it personally if somebody decides not to give us what we're asking for. But I think we have good reasons to be giving what we're asking for, and if I didn't, I wouldn't be standing here before you asking for it.
And I, I understand.
But I understand y'all have a job to do too, and there's lots of things to consider that I don't know about, so.
Right, well, I, I, I appreciate that and not, um, trying to influence me in any particular way, except with the actual facts. I, I think I'm gonna, uh, agree with you on this, and, and I may be in the minority, I, and that's okay. I've been in the minority before. But, based on the history of your family, and, and you've had other family members go to Riverdale, you had one, I believe, that was in student government, and I, I'm gonna guess, but, didn't you have a daughter that was president of student body or president of senior class, or, this is a number of years ago?
So, I was president of my senior class at Riverdale. My daughter Heather won up to me. She was president of the student body at Riverdale.
Okay, I thought I remembered that.
And by the way, we, we have two dogs that roam freely around our house on a radio collar, and we leave all of our lights on at night in the front and back, and we have only been broken into once in a car in our driveway. I wanted to point that out, that there's a reason we haven't been broken into as much as some of our direct neighbors.
Also, and, and I want you to understand that we have many people that are going to have to do, do something here that, that you're objecting to, and I understand. I, I do get it. You're gonna drive right by Riverdale High School, which is two miles away, okay? And you're gonna go an additional nine miles. And I get it. I, I, I understand. And of course, it's nine back. And, uh, but at any rate, uh, we, we have a lot of people that are gonna be doing that.
I understand.
And, and they don't like it. And I get it. I understand it.
I know there's people that live farther away than we do.
I, I appreciate the board's time. Thank you.
Room of motion?
Mr. Chairman, um, and I just want to say to all of the parents here, um, and, and I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the board, the whole board, and I know all of our board members are either parents or now grandparents that probably have children in the school system, and personally, I've been through a rezoning with my son who just graduated from high school, and I understand and I empathize with you. I truly do. Um, but in my role as a board member, too, these are very, very difficult decisions, and I know that Mr. Evans and our director, Mr. Spurlock, take them very seriously, and, and I'll grant you that some of these areas might have a little gray in between the lines that make the decisions difficult, but, um, I do feel like unless there's just really an extreme circumstance that I consider extreme, that, you know, I feel that I would have to uphold their decision, so I'm gonna move to uphold the, the denial of this rezoning.
Is there more? Second?
Second.
Like Ms. Young. Ms. Michaels, you call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. John Hodge?
Uh.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Essers?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, as I said earlier, our second appeal, uh, the family actually requested to withdraw that appeal, so the board does not need to take any sort of action. I will send them a letter just confirming that they've withdrawn that appeal. Our third appeal tonight is, uh, Ms., Ms. Hornsby is requesting for her child to attend Oakland High School instead of Riverdale High School. Ms. Hornsby, if you'd come up, please. Um, the, the student in question is an eleventh grader. Uh, the mother says she has medical conditions, and the student stays with another family when the mother has to receive treatments and things like that. The other family is zoned for Oakland High School. Uh, we have, Ms., Ms. Hornsby and I have talked, and I've requested some additional medical documentation to determine how often this occurs. Uh, we've not received it to this point, but if you have that tonight, we can take a look at it.
Unfortunately, um, the, my records, my medical records don't show that my appointments are quite often early in the AM, you know, all the way in Nashville.
Well, feel free to tell the board any information you'd like to share with them.
Okay. Um, once again, the only thing I can say is, is that we are blessed to have had a really great family that lives in Northwood subdivision, and they have stepped up to the plate to help get my son to school or for him to even spend the night, which has happened on several occasions, because we live in the country. I do not want my sixteen-year-old son out there by himself overnight. If I have an overnight stay in the hospital due to a surgery, such as I did back his freshman year, um, or if I have to be in for a really early AM appointment for an MRI, for an epidural injection, I want him to be able to stay as structured as he can. And this family has made it possible for us to do so. But with that being said, unfortunately, of course, they've got to see that their own family, their, has, sticks to their schedule, and they're just not going to be able to assist us, um, in fear of if, um, Peyton has to pick up and go to Riverdale.
Well, can you get this medical that Mr. Evans asked for?
Um, but the charts only show the dates. They don't show specific that I had an MRI scheduled for seven AM on such and such. It doesn't show that specific time. That's where I've had the problem.
Mr. Chairman, is it not possible, I mean, we don't, we don't necessarily need specifics, do we? We just need to see a pattern in which she's unable to provide the trans- correct?
What we were trying to do was just get an idea of how often this occurs, so we can just, you know, document that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we've been able to, unable to do that at this point because of that.
And unfortunately, that's something that's unpredictable. I have degenerative spine disease, and I never know if I'm going to need an epidural injection, or if I'm gonna have to have three MRIs in a period of six months, or I might go a year or a year and a half and not have to have another MRI. That's something that no one can really predict.
You, can't you get your doctor to send something to that effect?
Um, I suppose I could. I was understanding that I needed specific, like, I had appointments in the AM on this date, this date, and this date for the past year, or...
Well, that would be nice, but if...
Yeah.
If we had something from your doctor saying, you know, "We realize it might not happen every month or every six months, but it could happen two or three times a year," we would need something from your doctor stating that.
Okay, for example, this morning, and I am just in the process of, uh, going to a new doctor. This morning had to be in Nashville at nine fifteen, left at a quarter till. Still didn't make it there until nine thirty-five. So, with that being said, I guess if I'd had a better understanding, and that's not your fault, I guess that's my fault for maybe not asking. I just assumed.
I, I have a question, Ms. Hornsby, on that. So, in that situation, if, if you have to be in Nashville at nine fifteen, your son couldn't ride the bus, catch it? I mean, my understanding was he had to stay overnight with his family?
Well, and I was just using that as an example this morning's. Uh, right, sure, he could in that situation, but if I have to be there for a six or seven o'clock procedure, and obviously I've got to leave it well before that.
And I guess that's what we're trying to understand, is how often does that occur? Is that something that happens once a year? Is it once a month? That's kind of what we were talking about.
Right. Um, and, and there again, I can't give you that specific, because we don't know. That will all depend on how well I do.
There's a question I got. How many overnight stays do you have within a year?
Um, now, this past year, I've only had one. Uh, the year prior, his freshman year, I had several. That was around the time that I had my surgery.
But that was because of surgery, right?
Yes, that is correct.
And I take it, Mr. Evans, we're gonna have buses, buses go by her road, transportation?
Mr. Hodge, I didn't hear the first...
Y'all are gonna have transportation?
Yes, sir.
For her?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Evans, did you say we had two to do at our board meeting?
So far, we have two for the twentieth meeting, which is a week from Thursday, next week's meeting.
Well, we're gonna need some kind of documentation from your doctor.
Okay.
Uh, should we put this off to the board meeting and give her till, what is it, the twentieth?
Yes, sir, the twentieth, I believe that's next Thursday, is that right, Mr. Evans? Next Thursday's meeting, which starts at five AM, uh, five PM. Uh, we have two other board appeals scheduled for that night. We could definitely put this one on as a third one.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if, if we can stipulate that, we have that documentation in time for the board to review it, um, in plenty of time prior to the meeting.
Okay.
My plan is to give the board the documentation at the work session, which is on Tuesday, on any appeals that would be there from Thursday. So if I could get it from you by next Tuesday, that would be helpful.
Okay. If I may, barring any overnight stays, is there a reason that you couldn't, um, have any of your appointments later in the day?
I would love to, because I do not like dealing with, uh, morning traffic or afternoon traffic.
I know, I've done it for years, so, I feel your pain.
These doctors seem to like to schedule these appointments as early in the mornings as possible. I guess because as the day goes on, they get further and further and further behind.
Good man.
Well, if you'll get Mr. Evans at by the eighteenth, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We'll put this on hold till then.
Okay, thank you.
Call me if you have any questions. Okay, our fourth appeal tonight is the Medina family. Uh, they're requesting for their child to remain at Segal High School instead of Oakland High School. Come on up. Um, the student is an eleventh grader. Uh, the mother says they have been through, uh, two previous rezonings. In addition, the mother says the student has participated in some study abroad tours and wants to do the same in Span- uh, to Spain soon. Feel free to add anything else.
Sure. Uh, again, thank you for taking the time to hear this. As you said, it is a difficult decision, and I know that you've got multiple cases for you, before you. Um, what I'd like to say is just kind of a celebration of my daughter, is she is still happy now at Segal. She's very well adjusted, and as you said, Director, um, she has some challenges in the past. Um, she wasn't in honors classes, hardly ever made honor roll, wasn't really happy. Um, not to say that she can't adjust, because obviously she can, and she's done it before, but I don't feel like it's a good time in her life to do an adjustment her junior year. Her last card marking, and I don't know if you have, like, grades and that type of stuff before you, but she made all, all the way across, all A's and one B in different subjects, one B each time, but she, and she was taking honors English and ended up with a hundred and two in that class, and now is considering advanced honors. If you were looking at this child two years ago, when she was first made the adjustment to Segal, that wasn't the child that we're look, you're looking at before you. She is well adjusted, she's happy. Not only does she have a great peer group and a study group going on, and she went on the, um, tours, um, I feel that Segal High School has been good to her, enriching her in culture, um, through her Spanish studies. Um, she's been to Italy, she's been to Greece, and there's also a, now a Spanier trip on the ticket for at Segal High School. The teachers have really engaged her, um, where I don't, I haven't seen that engagement from her before in the past. Um, you probably have heard from other students or other parents that know it's hard to get your children to go to school. I have a hard time to get this one to stay home. That may be strange to say a parent to get up before the board and say that, but there's times when I'm like, "Honey, if you feel that bad, maybe you should stay home." She broke her toe, um, last year in only two days of school, because she made sure those appointments were before or after school. She made up all of her time, because she really likes being there and she likes learning. Um, she doesn't have the same opinion at, as, as far as going to a new school, learning new people, having that adjustment period. And, like I said, she adjusted before, but I can tell you that it has taken four to six card markings for her to ju- adjust. And her junior year, when that's so important, where colleges are looking at you, and she's trying to ge- keep her ACT score high and her grades high, um, because she does want to stay here in Murfreesboro and graduate from MTSU, I feel like it would be a destruct- disruption in her studies, in her emotional, um, growth. And also to say that her parents, both of us, have stayed in Murfreesboro, and we have lived in our same house for sixteen years. We haven't made any changes. We haven't moved to the best school district in another state, although offered better jobs in other states, we haven't gone, um, because we wanted stability in my daughter's life. We wanted her to graduate from the school that her sister graduated from just three years ago. She had an older sister who graduated from Segal High School, is doing well at MTSU. We have the same goals for our daughter if she chooses to walk in those footsteps, because she has that modeled before her. Um, she's already have classes that are formed, good peer groups, as I said, and I feel like probably all the teachers during this rezoning process, I know this is something we can't shield the teachers from, but they have a lot on their plate. Um, and now they're having to take on welcoming the new kids in their school and helping them to adjust. I think that's a lot. I applaud you for grandfathering in the seniors to stay at the school that they were at. I wish it could be extended to juniors, so I'm not just up here kind of like, um, arbitrating for my daughter, but also for the juniors. I think more of my, um, points here that I've listed don't just apply to my daughter, but to the juniors also, um, thinking about that change for them to make in such a critical time in their academic year. So again, we just hope that you would vote in favor of my daughter staying at Segal, um, as, as I am very concerned about her academic school year this year.
Are there other children?
No younger ones.
Um, you mentioned here two or three times that she had been rezoned, um, and I was just wondering when those times were and from where to where. Do you remember?
Yes, like I said, we bought our house sixteen years ago, um, and we're in the Walter Hill area, just behind, um, that VA administration, I guess. And, um, at that time we bought our house, she was zoned for Segal, straight down elementary middle and high. And then she ended up going to county, which would've been Walter Hill. And then w- we had expected that she was going to Segal Middle, but they split that off. Some of the students went to Segal Middle and some went to the...
Oakland Middle.
Right? And so, there again was the peer group separation, and, um, they all thought they were going to Segal Middle, but the school zone changed then.
I remember.
Yeah. And then, as you're in Segal Middle, you think the next progression is to Segal. I mean, Oakland Middle would be to Se- to Oakland High, and then we got rezoned over to Segal High. And so we're there now, and we just want to stay.
The family is on Antietam Lane, down Jefferson Pike. It's kind of across from Riverwalk neighborhood, if that helps. The family is on Antietam Lane, down Jefferson Pike. It's kind of across from Riverwalk neighborhood, if that helps.
Mrs. Medina, if I may, um, you mentioned a couple times about your daughter's travel um, and the opportunity with the, the work abroad or the study abroad, um, program, these EFT tours. Is that something that's only available to her through Segal High School?
That is my understanding. It's not something that's sponsored by Rutherford County. And, um, it's different teachers who actually participate and organize it. And, um, any given year, there could be any number of trips and they don't just sign up for them. Their teachers seek out the students that would be best adjusted to go for that length of time. Um, so it's, it's arranged by the teachers, teacher sponsored.
She's right, they are arranged by the teachers and we've got several of schools could do it. In fact, we had a group that left here at the beginning of June from Oakland High School to go over to, uh, France and in Europe, travel around Europe, but they were there on D-Day celebration.
Oh.
That was awesome.
But the locations can vary. We already know that next year is a Spain trip that's arranged. And, um, I don't know that Oakland has a Spain trip on the books.
Can you go with another group at a different high school if you choose to?
Those are, uh, they're not, they're not really through the sc- though the school usually has sponsors, but I'm sure they're, I mean, it could be something worked out if they're a Rutherford County school, you know, student.
Being that they're elected by the teachers, the teachers, and I'm not speaking of them as a matter of fact, but I do know that the teachers select the students and they are invited to go. I don't know that she would be invited to go per se, um, from a school she didn't attend.
Mrs. Medina, one more question if I may. I know you've expressed concern and I, I completely understand with the academic nature and the fact that your daughter's been very successful and congratulations, I applaud you on that. Um, and with her interest in the, in the languages and traveling and everything, with you being rezoned to Oakland, had you given any thought to or had any discussion about the IB program at Oakland? It seems like it might very well be well suited for your daughter.
And, and she is studying business right now. Um, she's on the business pathway, um, at Segal. And, um, like I said, this comes down to where she's already has, um, a team group built up there. Um, she knows the technology there and, um, we don't just rely on the school system, we're good parents too. Um, we took her to Europe a couple of years ago and in just a few weeks, we're going to Mexico. Um, she does want a business degree and maybe even, um, international business and she, um, is semi-fluent now in Spanish. So we're encouraging that with this Mexico trip. So it's not just left on the school board, but I would appreciate all the support I could get.
Other questions? Have a motion?
These are tough decisions, but, uh, we want to recommend, go with recommendation here to, uh, make that motion.
Thank you.
Have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second. Mr. Evans' motion?
Ms. Mark, call her on.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our fifth appeal tonight is, uh, Ms. Swoop is requesting her child to remain at Blackman High School instead of being rezoned to Rockville High School. If Ms. Swoop would come up, please. Uh, the student is a sophomore, uh, sibling has been grandfathered to remain at Blackman. The moth- the mother works at Cedar Grove Elementary and says the student wants to participate in the Blackman Collegiate Academy. Uh, the student is an athlete.
Hi, thank you so much for your consideration. Let me lower this a little bit. Um, so my daughter is ranked number one out of six hundred and twenty-one right now. I know that there are probably about twenty or so students that are ranked number one, but she is num- one of the number ones at Blackman. She just changed schools from, um, she was at Rock Springs Middle School last year. And, um, well, I know she was a freshman last year, but her eighth grade year, so she's just changed schools to the Blackman School Zone because that's where we live. Um, she's always gone to school on a zone exemption with me in Smyrna. And, you know, with my school being elementary and having to start earlier, I told her that she needed to go to our zone school. So she just changed schools, but she's very much excelling. She is in all honors and advanced honors. Um, when we went there this past fall, we asked about the, um, BCA and were told that because she was coming from Rock Springs Middle and not coming from Blackman Middle, we had to have a semester's worth of her grades to be able to prove that she could sustain those kinds of grades because she had made straight A's all the way through middle school as well. So as the spring semester approaches and we're able to apply for BCA, then all of this zone exemption stuff comes up and we were told that even though she qualifies, that we could not have her meeting for her to be approved to go to be, into the BCA program until this zoning issue was resolved. Um, I had been assured that as soon as, um, she would be granted to, um, stay in Blackman, that they would have a special meeting to allow her to be in the BCA program for next year. Um, my daughter does have doctor diagnosed ADHD as well. So for me, her doing this well and being ranked as number one out of six hundred and twenty-one just shows me how much she is thriving and that, you know, I really want her to be able to continue down that path. Also, my daughter is a veterinary science pathway, which we had been told they will not be having at Rockville. Um, we were told that the only agriculture program that they are having is the horticulture program. She wants to be a marine veterinarian, that aquatic veterinarian, that is nothing to do with the horticulture aspect of it. And I just do not feel that the, you know, not having her pathway, not having the BCA, which she's got a tremendous opportunity for, is meeting her academic needs if she is going somewhere that do not have those things.
Question?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do we have an updated list of what's being offered at Rockville and is there truth to that? That, that if the child wants to participate in the veterinary program?
programs, yeah.
Hi, um, this coming up school year, we are gonna be doing the horticulture pathway only. And then we will add, um, in the future as, as needed, but next year it will be horticulture only, that is correct.
When you say in the future, I, I can't.
We, we reevaluate that every year.
Okay.
And so we, if we see the, that the need is there, then we will go through the process to add that, so.
Just so you're aware, for pathway considerations, one thing we look at is how far along is the student in the pathway?
Mm-hmm.
If it's the last year and they just need one last course to complete a pathway, well, that's different than someone who's an underclassman and will have other opportunities to select a pathway. This student has finished a course her freshman year and so would be a sophomore next year.
But they have a whole program at Blackman for that, where the students go and get to take care of animals. They get to participate in those things and that is what she really wants to do. Since, since she's been in second grade, she's wanting to go into veterinary science. And Blackman is less than two miles from our house. I pass it on my way to and from work every day, going to Smyrna. Rockville is seven miles in the opposite direction from my house. So in addition to my drive from work, I will then be going past our house in the opposite direction. You know, I think Rockville is going to be a great school. The, the principal there was one of my assistants at Cedar Grove. I know it's gonna be a great school. It's just that the academic needs of my daughter having the BCA and the veterinary science program to me are very important for her at this time. She's excelling.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Ask a question. On the BCA, you mentioned something about you can't, she came from Rock Springs?
Yes.
Middle School?
Mm-hmm.
Do they go into the BCA on their ninth grade year?
When, um, if they were at Blackman Middle, they could have. But because she was on a zone exemption at Rock Springs Middle and this came straight from the, like, I went on that, the freshman orientation night, I went and talked to them. And they said that because she was coming from Rock Springs Middle, which is not part of the Blackman Schools, they had to have a semester worth of her grades to prove that she would still qualify for BCA, which was, I mean, she made straight A's all the way through middle school and I have copies of her report cards if you would like to look at that.
So she, she had A's at Rock Springs Middle?
Yes.
But the requirement was, is that something we can check on? I mean, yeah.
Mm-hmm, they wouldn't let her in Beta Club either, even though she had been in Beta all the way through middle school.
We can, we, we probably, uh, my next question would be, um, what, you said she was reas- she was on, at Rock Springs Middle on a zone exemption?
Yes, I'm a teacher.
What was her home school? What was the?
Blackman.
Blackman?
Mm-hmm, that's where my other daughter graduated from last year.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Swoop teaches at?
I teach in Smyrna.
Yeah, that's what, I knew that, but I was just wondering where her.
Yes, we've lived there for twelve years.
Gotcha.
So this was her first year to go to school in a Blackman Zone and she's, I mean, she has done phenomenal. We love the teachers there. We have the relationship from my other daughter going there all the way through, um, her high school years. And she's, she's excelling.
So she qualified as far as these grades and everything for the Collegiate Academy, but the only stipulation was that they had to wait a semester?
Mm-hmm, and I have the emails, if you guys would like for me to forward those to you, saying that she meets all the qualifications, but we can't have the meeting until this is resolved.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a tad bit confused, so maybe you can help clarify something for me. Your student is going into tenth grade?
She's going into tenth grade now, yes.
But for ninth grade, she went to a different high school?
No, in eighth grade because she was in, she went to middle school in Smyrna because I teach in Smyrna.
Mm-hmm.
And so that way she was real close to me and I did not want her getting on the bus without me home. Like, that makes me nervous leaving. So she was at, um, Rock Springs Middle School. So when we, last year, her freshman year, she went to Blackman. That was our zone school.
Okay, thank you.
And so they told me that she could not enter because she was not at Blackman Middle. So even though she had the grades and when we start, when we were checking on getting her in everything, the zoning was coming up.
It makes sense now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Couple of questions, if I may, were you finished, Mr. Evans?
I'm done.
Um, just for clarification too, when you talked about, um, the ability to apply for the Collegiate Academy and those rules, you said that they were gonna require a semester worth of those high school grades. So that would have been at the end of the calendar year this past year.
It was.
So if she had the grades to prove that after that first semester, was she not able to be accepted beginning in the second?
They said that their, um, that their interview process, and they had to have, like, their applications were due by February. So we did all of that. And then they would have their, um, interviews and everything. But then all of the zoning things were come, came up and we were sent an email stating that she could not have her meeting until after the, all of this zoning was resolved.
And just another clarification on the middle school then, technically then your daughter was zoned for Blackman Middle, but you chose not to have her.
Yes, she was zoned for Blackman Middle. We've lived there for twelve years. But she went to school in Smyrna because that was very close to where I work. She went to Cedar Grove with me. She went there all the way through and then Rock Springs Middle is less than two miles. So she went to Rock Springs Middle, which was very close to me in Smyrna.
And your daughter is also an athlete, correct?
She is an athlete. She's just a freshman. I mean, she's going into a V A sophomore. She was on JV. I mean, she did not matter in the equation.
She matters.
Well, thank you, but I mean, as a freshman, you know what I mean? Yes, yes. She's very good, but she's just a freshman. She's on JV. I mean, she wasn't like a star athlete. I wish she was, but you know, she's good, but you know.
Let me ask, let me ask a question here, um, and the audience is, uh, we probably need to, we need to say this. We have, the board members have, and we've had about a week to look over this material. And we have copies of, of really just about everything between Mr. Evans and the parents and, and so forth that has taken place since our, our part of the rezoning was completed, but before today.
Okay.
So, uh, and on your, on your letter, March twenty-first, I want to make sure that I get this, that I get this right.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not clear on this at all. This past year, your daughter was in a veterinary pathway?
That is her pathway, is veterinary science, yes.
And she took courses in this, in this pathway this past year, is my point?
This, I mean, that's her pathway, yes. She should have taken her, so her science classes was the beginning of that, yes.
Okay, and that's not gonna be offered at Rockville for this next year, is that correct?
Agri-science is the first class for any of the agriculture pathways. And so that is, I, I don't have her information, but I'm sure that that's probably what she took as a freshman, is the agri-science. And then the next level would be small animal, large animal, and then veterinary science. So at this point, if she were to go to Rockville, it would be one of the, um, horticulture classes is what we could offer at this time.
Does she have to take that, that's part of the pathway?
No, sir.
No.
For the veterinary science pathway, it's the agri-science and then small animal, large animal, and then vet science. Every agriculture program and study has to start with agri-science. So their, their freshman year is all the same. And then once they're, go into their sophomore year, then they split out to whichever, um, focus they want.
Okay, let me, let me ask this a different way.
Okay, sorry, that wasn't.
There's no guarantee that that, that that course will be offered at Rockville?
Correct, next year it will not be.
Will not be next year, okay.
Correct, the next year it could be. We've just got to look and see what our industry, um, data is and the need in, at the school, so.
So still no guarantee?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, I'm confused on something.
I'm sorry.
She applied for the Blackman Collegiate Academy while she was there, correct?
Yes, she has applied and everything is waiting on her to be able to have a meeting.
Didn't tell her anything?
They said she met all the requirements. They just had to have her meeting before that they could officially accept her to be enrolled in that, this, this next fall.
When they started doing the scheduling interview, they told us they couldn't interview her because she was rezoned for Rockville.
Similar to us, similar to the sports team, we don't permit them to, to let students try unless they're zoned for the school. It's similar to that. They can start the process, but they can't go through the full admissions process if they're not zoned for the school. So if I'm understanding you correctly, you are waiting to find out what the decision is before she can go any further.
Mm-hmm.
She was zoned for the school. She was zoned for Blackman.
Last year she was, yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying, that's where the, you have, by any chance, do you have a copy of her transcripts? So that we can see.
I have a copy of her report card.
You, can, can we see it?
I have several, actually, if you would like to see them. Anybody else?
Ms. Spurley, that's correct. This year she is zoned for Blackman, that's correct.
Mr. Evans, question for you on the Collegiate Academy, because then again, I'm looking through the paperwork that was a part of the zoning process. And of course, as we know, the, uh, one of the pieces of documentation on the zoning process is that the, um, sending and receiving principals have to say whether or not they agree to the move. Um, and I'm looking at hers and then Dr. Justice did not, um, support, um, rezoning for her to stay at Blackman. So I guess I'm a little bit confused if she was a candidate for the Collegiate Academy.
Because I have emails from Dr. Justice telling me absolutely she supported it.
So she marked no, but in the comment section on the application, she said, however, she is a teacher in our, for the school system, uh, and if approved, she's okay with it. That's what she put.
But based on that, as far as the mom's teaching position, not, she didn't make any reference to the Collegiate Academy?
No, ma'am, she didn't.
She's the principal at Blackman High.
Not to me, at least.
Thank you.
So she would have to go back through this process at Blackman?
No, I asked about that because of it being a huge process. And I was told that no, she would not have to start over, for, and reapply for everything, that she literally, that they would pick up with just her interview. And with, with the interview, then everything would be complete and that she would be able to register for that for the fall.
Refresh my memory, did we not grandfather in those for the Collegiate Academy?
For students that were in.
But we've been put on hold.
Currently in the program.
But we've been put on hold because of the zoning, so she was never allowed to officially go in as a sophomore. So if she would have had that, been able to do that, then this wouldn't have even been an issue, but everything's been on, put on hold because of the zoning.
Can, can I ask for clarification, and I apologize?
No, no, no.
A little confusing here. When you say she's put on hold, that's Dr. Justice and the administration at Blackman has said she cannot be in the BCA program until this process is finished?
It was the head of the BCA who just literally told me that as soon as we have clarification, that she can go to Blackman, that all they need is that for her, have to go through the interview process, and that then she would be able to register for that for the fall, but that they could not approve everything until we had this meeting.
Okay.
Would you mind looking up Blackman and then looking at what they require freshman year? Okay, I thought you were doing that.
This, uh, transcript here is, um...
It's her last report card.
Looks nothing like mine.
Nor mine, I looked at it and said, wow, I, you know, for one, how proud I am, but for two, I said, I think you're smarter than me.
She made, am I reading this right? Well, even I can read this, straight A's?
Straight A's, yes. Her lowest grade was a 98 for her final grade.
She made up for it with 102.
Yes.
In biology.
Yes.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Question?
Uh-huh.
Grades are great. Why is she tardy nine times to school?
Well, tardy also includes leaving early, and because she has ADHD, we have to go for her med checks, and they did not have those later on in the day. She also has, um, well, she had braces, she got her braces off, she had to get her retainers put in, and so it is not just, tardy does not just mean like getting to school there late, it is also having to leave early for doctor's appointments.
It says seven hours excused.
Yeah, and one was, literally, she said that she was in the bathroom, there was a line, so that includes like if she's already at school, but she's late walking in a class. So it was literally like, the two that were unexcused is because she was already at school, but it was bathroom and, yeah.
You like to call it, you like?
Getting to that class, so she was late for that class from changing from another class.
Guess I have a question for Mr. Evans.
Sure, I have.
Have we allowed any rising sophomores to, uh, zone exemption for their career pathways?
Pathways, uh, if the principals would agree to it, um, possibly, I, I can't do it from memory, but it would have, the principals would have to agree because of a very specific case involving a pathway, but I, I don't know any further than that.
I would like to recommend that you go talk to Dr. Justice and see if she's willing to approve that, and then come back to us, is what I would like to recommend.
Okay.
Unless some of the other board members have another suggestion, but I just don't have enough information here to make a decision.
Okay.
I would like to see her at Blackman if she's going into the veterinarian program and it's not offered somewhere else.
Thank you.
She's, she's got the grades, and if not for going with you, her mother, which is a benefit of you and working for our county, she would have been at that school. So, um, I'm like Mr. Young, I would just like to see if Dr. Justice would approve this and then let us make, make that decision. And I'm sorry, I know that's kind of?
No, I mean?
Rappin' ways, and then?
Yes, I mean, we have emails saying that she would love to have her there, but, I mean, I, what, what do I need to take to her? Because I've already taken everything that I can, I don't know what else I need to take to her, I can get it, whatever it needs to be.
I mean, we've got two principals here who've recommended.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, let me ask a question, I'm looking at your original request for zone exemption, I think it was filed on February 13th, I'm not quite sure, well, it was signed on the February the 20th, 12th, and 25th, but in your reason for requesting stay, you mentioned nothing about the BCA.
Well, at the time, I did not know at, at that point that she wasn't going to be able to interview, this was just because of my work situation and driving to and from Smyrna is what it started off at, but then as the time went on, and I was checking with Rock Vale and trying to get things situated, I found out they did not have the veterinary science program either, and they did not have a collegiate program.
Yeah, but I, I guess I'm going back to where you're saying, there was obviously a conversation at the beginning of the school year that she could not get into the BCA the first semester, but if her grades were, were steady and, and she made progress, that she could get in the second semester?
Yes, that is when, that's when the process came, they said they needed a semester of grades as proof from Blackman Schools, because she came from Rock Springs Middle, and I do not know why, that's just what I was told. But she made straight A's all the way through middle school and was in Beta Club and everything there as well.
So, Ms. Swob, if I make another question, um, so with your daughter's performance in middle school, the academic performance, did you know at that time that you wanted her to, or did she know that she wanted to apply for the Blackman Collegiate Academy?
Yes, yeah, so I went to the, the, um, little booth that they had set up on the freshman orientation, and I went, we went to that and the Beta, and they said that they needed a semester of those grades from Blackman.
Okay.
I, I don't know why, like she was?
Whereas if she had stayed or had been at Blackman Middle, where she was zoned for, it wouldn't have been a question?
It would have came from Blackman Middle.
Thank you.
This is all, some of this information is on this page. Just transferred schools this past year. She lived there for 12 years. Church Creek High School, friends and teammates went there, difficult transition for her. She hates her new schools again, which we don't like either, I believe it or not.
Yes.
Dr. Justice and Mr. Lucre both agreed Kinsey's zoning exemption, and she is a wonderful student, which is correct.
Yes, that's what they told me.
And it does say she applied, has applied to the BCA. I kind of agree with Mr. Young, but I'd like to know, I'd like to know that, I, I, um, Dr. Justice is a terrific hands-on principal, and she's probably going to know all about, all about this, I'd say. But what exactly did you request, Mr. Young?
So she goes back and, and talks to the principals and, and get their feedback to us, so we know if they support this or not.
Let me say this, on this, on the last page, I believe at the top it says, page three, and it says received by RCS Public Relations. It, now, I can't read everything, but it looks like, um, teacher in RCS, if approved, okay, TJ.
That's LJ, Lisa Justice. That's her initials.
Okay, so that's what, that's what I'm saying, it's like, to me, this is saying, if it's approved, it's okay, if we approve it, it's okay with her.
Yes, that's what that means. Mr. Lucre marked no.
But she was saying on, because of the fact that her mother is a teacher within the school system, which by the way, thank you for, it's not an easy job these days sometimes, I know.
Thank you.
Um, but if I'm not mistaken, is, Mr. Evans, you can clarify this for me, when we talk about a zoning exemption that's available for a child of a school system employee, or a bus driver, it applies only if they're requesting that they be rezoned either to the school the parent's at or within that school's zone where the parent works, right? Which in this case?
Our procedures say that if a teacher or an employee can take their child to the school where they work, if the grade level they need is not offered at their school, so for example, this teacher is an elementary teacher, has a high school student, then they could go to the feeder school to where they work, which in this case would be Laverne High School.
Right. Which, and I wasn't sure if Ms. Sharp was aware of that, so thank, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, but, but do they offer the veterinarian program at Laverne High School?
Yes, they do.
Okay. I have one more question, and I promise I'll stop. Ms. Swob, I'm looking at the email that you sent to Mr. Spurlock, Director Spurlock, on February the 28th, where you wrote to request an appeal for your daughter, and in looking through the, the body of the email, and I see you talk about, um, you've certainly talked about the BCA and about the Beta Club, but I don't see any mention in your email of the veterinarian path?
I did not know at that time, I did not know until they had the pre-registration for the students at the, at Rock Vale, and I'm literally going through and trying to find her next class, and then I send an email to the counselor, and she says, I'm sorry, we're not going to have, we're not going to have the veterinary science program, all we have is horticulture. So then it was like, well, you know, on top of like not being able to have the BCA, they don't even have her pathway now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Need a motion.
I motion to move to next, to next school board meeting after a conversation with Dr. Justice.
On the 20th?
Yes, so that's the next one. So, um, Ms. Sharp, you're wanting to know what the principal recommendations are? I'm assuming both principals, Mr. Lucre and Dr. Justice?
Yes, well, Dr. Justice is the receiving principal, correct? No?
No, she, she is the receiving principal, yes, but we, we typically will get, especially with, well, with any student, we want to see the recommendations, what both principals have to say about it, because one would be losing a student, one would be?
Correct, correct.
Is that what you're asking for, those recommendations from both?
Uh, not necessarily Mr. Lucre's, but I would like to hear from Dr. Justice, because there seems to be some discrepancies whether she was going to be approved for that program or not.
But, think about it, she's zoned for, for Blackman. Mr. Lucre ought to have some say-so.
She's zoned, zoned for Blackman.
Zoned for Blackman.
I guess my question is, if you could, Mr. Evans, if we're going to put it off, look through, uh, your exemptions and see if there's any others that have been denied to get into the academy. They want to get in the academy, but we denied, uh, because they're out of zone.
I can attempt to do that, I don't know if I, I mean, I don't exactly track it that way, but I can look through any that have been denied to Blackman and see was it for, if they were also trying to get into the Collegiate Academy, if that would be helpful.
Yeah. I'd also like to know if she was going to be accepted into the Blackman Collegiate Academy?
Right, that's, yeah, that's, yes, that's mine.
Ms. Page, can you speak on that? On the, when they're taking applications?
Yes, the app, according to the website, they start taking applications in December for the second semester, I'm texting with Dr. Justice now, she did indicate there are instances where a first semester freshman can be in BCA, but I've not received what that requirement would be at this point.
Are instances where they are, they go directly in there?
Yes, according to Dr. Justice, but I'm?
But, but the application itself says the, they would take applications during?
December 1st. Mm-hmm.
At the end of the first semester?
That's right, that's what the website currently shows.
Yeah, there's a timeframe, and so like, that timeframe isn't over in December, it's like over, I can't remember if it was the end of January or end of February when we had to get hers in.
That's correct.
Um, but the, the, I know that there were 8th graders that were going into 9th grade from Blackman Middle that entered BCA.
Is there anywhere on there where it has the level of courses that the freshman class would take?
It has a GPA requirement, there's a metric chart they use, they consider attendance and things like that, but it's just?
What I'm saying is, what, if, if someone's accepted into the BCA as a freshman?
Oh.
What courses, because that, this is a sophomore accepting, because that's what you're describing.
Right.
What would those freshmen have to take? I mean, would it be advanced honors?
It didn't indicate that for freshman application, it showed a GPA that I saw, there may be something more specific in their application.
What was the GPA?
4.0 was five points, but they scale it, so they do a metric, and everyone gets points assigned for different qualities.
So, one more question, I guess, and I'm looking at the original zone exemption application, um, Swob, in it, under the section where it says reason for request, attached supporting documents have required, everything that I'm reading that you had written there had to do with transportation concerns.
That was, and that still is a concern.
There's no mention of Collegiate Academy or the pathway for the Vet.
One, two, three. Got four honors.
It's like evolved.
All this is kind of, is kind of known, ever known, like registered for stuff, and so, that's not good enough.
Transportation was my original thing, it's because it's to and from my work, and it's, like I had mentioned before, whereas it's going to be almost seven miles in the opposite direction, but then we were told that she could not continue, or you know, like get into the BCA until the zoning thing was resolved, and then after that, we were found out that they don't have her pathway either.
And with her extra curios, bus transportation, so it doesn't apply to her anyway, so she's able to pick her up after practice or after COVID or whatever, on her way to work.
So the mornings are the challenge.
Working, the oldest takes it on her day-to-day shift, so transportation proposal.
I think we have a motion, is that correct? Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion to get some more information in a second. Ms. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, can we, can we clarify the, the motion a little more precisely as to what we're looking for, what we're asking for, I think, um, the way it was worded is a little bit vague.
Like, um, correct me if I'm wrong.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sharp wants to, some information is, to whether she is going to get into the Collegiate Academy. If what her, if her grades, would she be accepted in the, from Dr. Justice?
Yes.
And also what Mr. Lucre says about it, because he also has a, some type of Collegiate Academy, what's it called?
Honors com, honors? Honors Academy?
Honors Academy.
Yeah, I'm talking about Rock Vale, I think it's Honors Academy.
Oh, yeah.
But they do not have the veterinarian?
Correct.
Correct, they do not have the veterinary. See, I can hear her microphone, but I can't hear any of ours.
Okay, so?
So?
The motion is that you want additional information from Dr. Justice, whether the student would be admitted to?
The BGA, yes.
The Collegiate Academy, and you want information about what Mr. Lucre would recommend?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, is that, I'm just trying to make sure we understand what to gather.
And the information I'd like to know too, also in this, is would both principals sign off on her career pathway as a veterinarian pathway? If she decided to go veterinarian, would Lucre and Dr. Justice both approve that?
And if we may, some more discussion before we actually take a vote, I mean, I'd, I'd like to have some clarification in that too, Mr. Evans, from you, as far as other zoning exemptions that were granted, did we grant, um, this same exemption for sophomores that had been accepted or were already in the Collegiate Academy? I guess really that were accepted would be more appropriate, because if they?
If they're in the Collegiate Academy, they would be grandf?
They were grandfathered, okay. Can we look, go back and look at the other zoning exemptions and see if we made any exceptions for ones that had been accepted, or do you recall if there were any, like in the situation of this young lady?
I'm not sure if I understand what you're asking.
Okay.
If they're already in the Collegiate Academy, they're grandfathered.
Okay.
So they would have been approved, that was the board's decision as part of the rezoning plan.
I'm not trying to clear up anything, I think she's asking, or did we turn anyone down that was wanting to go in the BCA at Blackman?
Thank you, Director, yeah, that?
I can tell you that we have, I can't give you the exact numbers, but I, I recall speaking to families who were interested in the program, but they did not qualify for a grand, or a, the grandfather option because they're not in the program already, and they were turned down, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I know we have had similar situations.
Okay.
Wanting to do the program.
I, I think that answered my question then, so thank you, so I don't think it's necessary to make a motion any further based on that.
And if we've turned some down, we, we don't have much of a choice.
I met with a family last week who was interested in the program, but was not already admitted to the program, and when I explained to them what the board's motion was for the rezoning plan, they were disappointed, of course, but they understood, the board's rezoning plan was if they were already enrolled in the academy, then they were grandfathered.
Had already been.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And as a clarification to the board, the, the way that a freshman can be in BCA would be if they were in eighth grade zoned for Blackman High School, they could apply that summer in a similar window. So Rock Springs Middle students that are eighth graders can apply to be in BCA starting their freshman year, and so there was a window of time in which you could apply over the summer, and if they missed that window or weren't aware, they can apply in the spring window, which is what was done here.
We got a motion and a second to put it off till, or to put it off till the eighteenth, so you could get the information, correct?
It'll be on the twentieth, but yes, sir, I'll need to get the information to you all by the eighteenth, that's correct.
Eighteenth. Mr. Chairman, let me, let me make sure I understand, Mr. Evans, I asked a question a while ago, have you denied any that applies to your discretion, or you have, correct?
Yes, sir, you had asked me earlier, I believe you asked me, had we denied any sophomores or rising sophomores?
I wasn't worried about sophomores, I was worried about the zoned. They, they, they were going for an exemption, okay, just like in their case, they're zoned to Rockville. Have you allowed any others like that?
For the Blackman Collegiate Academy?
I think you just answered Ms. Moore's question.
That, that would not have been the reason that we approved it, we didn't approve them for the BCA, but they're having other families inquire about getting exemption, because they're interested in the BCA, and those have been denied.
That's, that's my question. Okay, we have a motion to put it off until the twentieth and a second, so we can get more information. All the roll.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
No.
Ms. Assis?
No.
So I will bring back to the board for the work session, what the updated recommendations are from the two principals, and then we can hear this appeal again on the twentieth, is that correct? Is that what you're-
Is there something I need to get from?
No, ma'am, I can speak to both principals and find out what their recommendation would be on the exemption, and all that information, and bring it back. If you all will come to the meeting on the twentieth.
All right, thank you so much.
I'll communicate with you before then.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, our sixth appeal tonight is, the new family is requesting for their child to remain at Stewart's Creek High School instead of being rezoned to Blackman High School. The student is a junior, the mother says the student wants to take Advanced Honors Math III, and says Blackman does not offer it. I have spoken to the principal at Blackman, and she says they do offer that program through the BCA, and that she would be happy to work with this family if the student needs to take that course. I'm free to add any additional information.
Thank you. We have a very unique situation. Where we live at, Rockville butts up to us, Eagleville butts up to us, Blackman butts up to us, and Stewart's Creek. She went to Blackman Elementary, Blackman Middle, then come high school, it's Stewart's Creek. I have no guarantee that next year she's not gonna be pulled to Eagleville, or Rockville, or any of these schools, and with our current situation, I have a grandmother with Alzheimer's. She broke her hip a couple of years back, we nursed her back to health, got her back in her own home, then she fell and broke her knee. It will not be possible this time. Our goal is to keep her at home as long as we can, and with the collegiate, I'm worth in. Some days I don't know if I'm coming, or I'm going, or what's going on, and all these requirements to be in the collegiate, I'm afraid that as a mom, I just can't do it. She is a great help to me. Any little break I get is only provided by her. I can't even get family to come around to borrow money from me. No one is there to help. This is the only one I've got. She's worked really, really hard. I just don't want to see her have to take a class that she would be offered at Stewart's Creek to take a lesser class. I want her to be able to have that education and all the opportunities that come. I, I really, I'm exhausted, I don't know how much more I can say, if y'all have any questions. I also have a letter from a therapist to attest to the fact that I'm not making up how big of a help she is to me, if y'all would be interested. I did not have that when I sent in my other information, as well as her report cards, that she is a four point oh student while she is doing all this. She has taken on much more than a girl of her age should, and I'm sorry, I can't be more than what I am.
Just a question I got.
Yes, sir.
And reading your letter here versus Dr. Justice's, you're basically saying they don't offer the class at Blackman, and Dr. Justice says they do.
Well, this is what we were offered here, that they're gonna put her in Math III, and the honors Math III, but if you were in Stewart's Creek, which math class, you know better.
I'm not being attended because of my man. I have no access to that, and the little bit I get to examine, it's something I can't even go through because of that, because I retired twenty-four seconds ago, right in my office.
Miss Spurlock, I guess you have to answer this. This, this Blackman class, when is it offered?
I'm not sure, it just says here when, because she's been meeting with both counselors, because either outcome, I want her to have every opportunity that she can have, and in this, they had put Advanced Honors Math III, but what she-
Honors.
Honors, Math III, but what she has taken, and she has always taken, and won awards in, is Advanced Honors. I have the awards, if you, if you would like to see any of those, maybe I'm not understanding.
If I can, it says here, Advanced Honors, that they're offering, is that correct? Okay, Blackman offers, according to this course-
Only if she can be in the collegiate.
I think what, no, I think what they're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, that that is a course that usually only the collegiate academy is, takes, however, she could make an exception to a student who just wanted to take that Advanced Honors class.
So when I communicated with Dr. Justice, she said that she could work with this family, it is usually reserved for those who are in the BCA, but she could work with this family if the student needs that course, so that the student could take it.
Not be in, she didn't have to be in the whole entire.
That's my understanding from Dr. Justice.
Which would mean that she would not have to go through these other requirements that you just mentioned a minute ago, and I understand your frustration is very obvious, and, and I, I get it, but, and it may be, we'd have, I guess, check, but it sounds like to me it's the same course.
Well, and there's also no zero period. Based on what we thought, Stewart's Creek, because my son, he got moved in his freshman year at Blackman and put in Stewart's Creek. He went fine, he graduated all the way through, and then she got in. She has planned all her classes around going to Stewart's Creek, because up to that point, that's all we knew. She's gonna have to miss out on some classes if she's moved to Blackman, because they don't have that zero period. Where we live at, my daughter, she spends about an hour on the bus going and an hour on the bus coming back. I managed to get somebody that would drive her to school, so that she had that extra hour at home. Well, if she's going to get there, then she can take advantage of the zero period and get some of her other classes, because she's dual enrolled at MTSU. Like I said, we've done everything we could to keep up with both, and Blackman didn't want to do anything, because, well, she's went to Stewart's Creek. Stewart's Creek didn't want to do anything, because she's on for Blackman. We finally just narrowed it down and got both of them to sign every paper we possibly can. Like I said, I, I just, I wish I had more time, and there's no guarantee you won't see me again next year if they want to put her in Eagleville, or Rockville. Where we live at, every one of those buses, with exception to Rockville, because it wasn't a school until this year, passes my house. Eagleville passes, Blackman passes, Stewart's Creek passes my house. Every one of them, so I'm just as likely to be ripped next year and be doing this again, and how do I prepare for a school that I have no idea what they're gonna have?
I, I wouldn't want to commit this board to anything, but I, I, I can, I may be able to make you feel, and I don't have any idea how this is gonna turn out, okay, I don't, I don't know, I haven't made up my own mind yet, but she's gonna be a junior, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, the, the chances are excellent, really good, that she's gonna finish her junior year wherever she enters in the fall, okay, wherever that is, and then, her senior year, we didn't move seniors this year.
I hope not.
So, so the chances of that happening, well, actually, we, we gave seniors a choice, that's what we did, okay? And I, I don't know the percentages, but a lot of them wanted to stay where they were, and a lot of them moved, and, and went on, so I'm just, I, I think you can, I, I sense that you have other things maybe you need to worry about, and don't worry about those things, okay? I, I wouldn't.
I'm just trying to keep her as balanced as I can.
Understood.
With everything that's going on, the fact that she's straight A, she's doing good in band, I've got her on the right path. Why, why she is as good as she is, I have no idea. I mean, this, this child comes home, and it's no sitting down and playing, it's, okay, can you do this, I need to go do a load of laundry? Can you keep an eye on her to make sure she's not walking out or moving, and I'm sorry, but she's my greatest resource. It's important for her to know her granny, and to have her there and learn from that wisdom, and I just, I'd hate to put her in a nursing home, so that she can have all the opportunities that are needed, and I just couldn't let her take a class without fighting for it. I'm the mother that, I may not have much time, and Lord knows, I went to Eagleville before they had the football field, so, this advanced and this honors, and she's got more letters behind her classes and numbers, I couldn't even begin to tell you. She is on the path to be the first young woman to graduate college that doesn't have to. She's putting in her work now, and I would just really implore, let me give her that opportunity, and if there's any way that you could lessen some of the stress on my back, I know it's not your job, but I'm imploring you to please consider the medical need, and how great this woman is, the woman who went to work in the laundry at fifteen years old, to put her family through, so that they could get a little better. Thanks to her, all her sisters graduated with an eighth grade education. Thanks to her, I graduated with a high school diploma, first one, on my side. I want to give her all the chances I can, and I'm sorry if I'm emotional, but at this point in time, I'm so frazzled, if I wasn't emotional, something would be wrong.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Back to the academics, and I can appreciate your position, but back to the academics.
Yes, ma'am.
You're talking about the math class, but you say no zero period. What are the other classes, because that's yet to been discussed, what are the other classes she's missing out on by moving? Because it's my understanding that most classes are offered at all of our schools, so-
May I, may I let her take over?
Please, sure.
I took culinary, so I took two periods this year, and a period. So, next year, I could not be representing for my student, and because Blackman doesn't offer that zero period, I'm gonna have to pull personal finance to my senior year, and I have not tried to be done with two years, which is what I planned, so then, everything would go according to how I was expecting to be. But, my Blackman counselor said, no, we cannot take personal finance next year because of dirt and, and ACT prep.
So what classes are you missing, then? What is gonna, I mean, you might have to move them around, but what are you, what are you missing by moving?
Well, it would give me the opportunity to take more classes, definitely get some other things from school offers, and because I would have to put off my personal finance, then I would have one less open period to explore other things my school offers, other like, other classes. Off the top of my head, there's, I can't name them, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
But in general, because I have one, I have, I have a semester class that I would put off, that I was not expecting, I would put off.
She took two semesters of culinary, thinking that this was where the practice was gonna be. Because I just moved my son, they moved him to one time, and we thought we were pretty well safe, well, when she looks up the map, we got everything, I mean, every one of them is highlighted.
But if I would have known I was going to Blackman, I probably would have taken it, so I can put in all the classes how I'm expecting.
So, just to be clear, your pathway is offered at both schools?
Yes.
Yes, so you're not going at a different pathway?
No.
The academic classes that are required for your pathway are available at Blackman, which is where you're being moved to, correct?
That's what he just said.
Okay.
We're not aware.
Okay. Okay, and then you also mentioned you're part of the band. Does the band meet before school, which would be a zero period? How much time do you, because if, if you're talking academically for zero period, but it's my understanding that my children go to Riverdale, their band meets before and after school, so is band a variable for zero period for you?
Band is, it's all about the school.
Okay.
I'm so good for being leadership, because of the whole Blackman thing. A lot of people, they do their lead, they pick their leadership courses because there are teenagers, and I have a lot of juniors that, which a lot of people do leadership with, man, they're juniors, senior year, and I can't because of that, because I don't go to Blackman.
And you want, what course are you wanting to take zero period with?
ACT.
ACT prep? They, on zero period for Blackman, what are they, is, are they using that for some kind of exploratory class, or something like that? Because usually, usually your zero period, it's, it's a, it's an eight period, and not everybody does an eight period, you know, so that's before school, so I'm trying, usually it's either has something to do with athletics, or fine arts, or something of that nature.
Mr. Spurlock, if I may, I was, I'm just going by memory, but I was thinking that Blackman had their zero period around lunch, because of the credit union that was coming, remember the credit union that came in?
Yeah, I remember that, but that's what I'm asking them, if they can kind of, is it-
They utilize it for an intervention period, that's what Dr. Justice describes it as for intensive learning.
But sometimes they do, you can put one in there.
I believe-
It's not for everyone.
I recall that, in an IEP meeting, we discussed that as an opportunity, so that could be.
It's when they use their intervention time.
That's right.
Mr. Evans, question for you, if I may, so you've written in our notes, and I just want to clarify that, the Advanced Honors class, class that's a concern versus the Math III, that we spoke with the Blackman principal, and she said she would be able to work with her to make sure she was able to take that class, correct?
I understand, and the board could always put that as part of their motion to, to allow her to take that course, if that was, and, and that, that should self-satisfy the parent's concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a motion? I'm a motion, Mr. Justice, to deny their request, providing that Dr. Justice authorizes them to take this, this advanced honors Math III. Okay, have a second?
Second, sir.
Like Ms. Johnson? Ms. Michaels?
Mr. Hodge?
Uh.
Jordan?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Assis?
Uh.
I will follow up with Dr. Justice and make sure that can happen.
Thank you all for your consideration.
So can I, just so I understand, what you're saying is if they can work this out with this young lady, with the classes and everything that she needs at Blackman, that's why we're denying?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that was the motion-
And that's, and that will help?
Perhaps, too.
Okay.
If that doesn't work out for some reason, I'll bring it back to Dr. Spurlock, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay, our seventh appeal tonight is, Ms. Hawkins is requesting her child attend Rockville Middle School instead of Christiana Middle School. Ms. Hawkins. Make sure I've got the name correct, Ms. Angela Hawkins, or Hawkins. Mr. Chairman, typically, if a parent does not attend the hearing, we do some of these certified and regular mail, make sure that they know about it, typically, the board will make a motion to deny, because they did not attend.
Okay. They're not here, do we have a motion?
So move Mr. Chairman to uphold the decision to deny the zoning appeal.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Ms. Sharp, thank you. Okay, Ms. Michael?
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Uh.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
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 Okay, our eighth appeal tonight is Mr. Duran and Ms. Duran. They're requesting for their child to remain at Segal High School instead of Rockville High School. The parents, as part of their parenting plan, feel free to come on up, please. The parents, as part of their parenting agreement, had agreed to keep the child at Segal. They do have joint custody. The dad has been rezoned to Rockville, and the mom remains zoned for Segal, so they have the option to attend Segal. However, the mom, however, the mom wants to move to the Oakland zone, which is why an exemption is being requested. The student is an athlete. And if I've misunderstood any of those facts, please feel free to clarify.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for hearing this appeal. In terms of two points that I'd like to make very briefly, the first is hardship looks very different when you're the one having to endure the hardship. You can read through our appeal information. Having come through a 30-month divorce proceeding, where I was granted primary parent, with the condition that I moved into the Segal School District, which I did, I live at 209 South, excuse me, 209 Second Avenue downtown. It's actually within about four blocks of four different high school zones. At the time I moved, it was Segal, it's obviously been rezoned. Facing the prospect of having to sacrifice that primary parent, which was very contested during that long divorce, as a father who's gotten that, and who's looking at having to give that up, in order to have his daughter stay at her school, again, that is something that I view as a hardship, coming from, excuse me, again, like I said, it looks very different when you're the one that's facing the hardship. My attorney does have some information that he'd like to share with you relative to the parenting plan and changes in the law that could affect that, but all of them mean that I would still have to give up something that was litigated and awarded as part of a very long divorce proceeding. The second thing that I'd like to bring to your attention is that, and this is probably a mistake on my part, I asked my attorney not to include this in the original filing, but my daughter did have a 504 plan that she was subject to as a middle school student. After several years of counseling and working through cognitive behavioral therapy, she did, we did elect as a ninth grader not to have her continue that, but this, moving from schools is a potential trigger event. And Mr. Pate, I don't know if you can supply copies of that 504 to the board?
Yes, I have a copy.
But I would really hate to have to come back here and ask at a later time if, because of this, being a trigger event for her behavioral anxiety, that because of that, you know, you all have the opportunity to avoid putting her at risk of having that kind of a trigger event, and I would certainly hope that you exercise that authority to not put her at that risk.
Just one phrase table.
Sir, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Y'all both have joint custody, correct?
They are co...
Co?
Well, Mr. Duran is the designated primary residential parent.
So it's 50/50?
They do have joint decision making.
Right.
And that was designated, that way, after, it was almost a three-year contested brother of kinship's divorce. So that the daughter in issue, Reagan, could obviously be zoned for Segal High School. And Mr. Duran, good to his word, moved, obviously, into the Segal School District under the court order, so that if he moved, the child was still able to attend Segal. He did just that. But then the zoning changed, on his particular residence, the unbeknownst to him, obviously, suddenly, he's now left, he's no longer living in the Segal School District. I understand he's living in the Rockville School District. Now, at one point...
Mom is living in the Segal.
Yes, mother is, as of today, living in the Segal School District. That is her legal residence today. Now, I did not mention in my letter, because I was not aware of it at that time, but Ms. Gillen, I think I just handed to you a formal copy of the Senate Bill 402, signed by, obviously, Governor Lee, effective July the 1st, that you're probably familiar with, that states when the parties have equal residential time, they can be designated as co-primary residential parents, but even notwithstanding that section, when the section three of the Act states when a child is scheduled to reside an equal amount of time with both parents, the address of either parent may be used to determine school zoning.
Right.
That was obviously not in effect when this divorce was concluded in '18.
But right now, you correct me if I'm wrong, right now, she could go to Segal...
Based on the mom's...
Based on the mom's address.
Yes, without the change of the primary residential status.
Right.
Daughter could continue to be their PRP, as we call it, having equal residential time, that's not going to change, but the zoning exemption, as of today, on residence, because her legal residence is Segal.
What you're trying, what you're trying to do is you're looking far out, because mom has said she's going to, wanting to build in the Oakland zone?
That is sometime in the future.
Yeah.
Right now, I think the property that she has recently purchased, she's using for financial investment.
Right.
The legal address is in Segal, that is...
Right. What grade, what grade is she currently?
She's a sophomore.
She'll be a sophomore?
Sophomore.
I'm going to go back and use some of the same logic that Mr. Jordan used, perhaps, maybe by the time that this house is built, or isn't built, she'd be a junior, and I would think, because of the enrollment at Segal High School, being much lower than the other high schools, that we would, we would approve a zone exemption.
Yes, sir.
I mean, on, I mean, you correct me if I'm wrong there, Mr. Evans, that's kind of like what we've done before, right?
Right, and, and so, just so we're all on the same page, right now, she doesn't need a zone exemption.
Right.
Because the mother, legal residence is in the Segal zone.
Right.
And as long as the mother doesn't move, there, this is a moot point.
Yeah.
If she moves, that's when you would need a zone exemption.
Zone exemption, right.
And I think what Mr. Spurlock's saying is that, if that's a point in the future, maybe during her junior year, there's a stronger chance we would approve it at that point, because she is a junior, the school has available space, things like that. And so we're not sure exactly why this is even being brought to us at this point.
Well, it was brought to us because at, at the point of the appeal being filed, my client was unaware of that act.
Right.
I wasn't aware of that act until relatively recently, and then as soon as I became aware of it, I got with my client, and says, you know, this has completely changed on the day of the divorce, it was not in effect.
Right.
Technically, it's in effect July 1st, but that is what, a little more than two weeks.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but if I looked at this and understood it, I would probably say, starting July 1st, unless mom moves, and she would have the ability to attend Segal High School.
Yeah, my recommendation would be that, and this is just my recommendation, the board can do what it wants, of course, is that, this is, this request is denied because it's not needed at this point.
Right.
They are, they have the ability to attend Segal because of the mom's address and the new law that's going to affect July 1st, at some point in the future. If, if the mother decides she wants to then pursue a home in Oakland, that would be the appropriate time for her to ask for a zone exemption. That's my recommendation.
So, Mr. Evans, how would that look, then, if, let's say, the decision, the mom made a decision to move, say, in August, right before school started?
We would have to go through a zone exemption.
She'd have to apply for a zone exemption, we would consider that request at that time.
Really, right now, if you look at, with this, with this law going in effect July 1st, and what we current, even if it didn't go in effect July 1st, what we're currently looking at right now is she's zoned for Segal High School. So we would maybe be making a decision on a, proving a zone exemption based on what might occur.
On hypothetical.
On a hypothetical, right.
I don't know that we need to do anything unless, unless the board wants to confirm she's to remain at Segal. If, if we want to do that, I guess we can do that, but I don't see any reason why we just don't wait and see if there's something needed later.
Well, and I would, if it's denied, it shouldn't be denied on evidentiary basis, it should be denied because the effectiveness of the new law, effective July 1st, the child can be deemed to be zoned to Segal based on the mother's residence, as of this date, with Segal High School, and father of a non-legal parent, who's established legally as a primary residential parent.
I would agree with that, and with the understanding that if the mother's address changes, at that point, she would need to, if she doesn't want to go to Oakland High School, would need to request an exemption at that point.
So we deal with it at a later date.
Right.
That seems like a very clean way to address this.
And we apologize, of course, the law here had a little bit to do with it.
Yes, sir. And like I said, I didn't put it in my letter, I wasn't aware of it.
Right.
Laws get passed, and attorneys just aren't made aware of it, and it'll come to their attention, and as soon as that occurred, then I addressed it with my client. So I think that would be the proper outcome.
So, this new law, then, the governor has signed off on it?
Yes, he has.
It just simply doesn't go into effect on July 1st? That's only three weeks away.
And this is, this is a new law that Ms. Page is already addressing with our schools, because it's, it's basically approved, we're just waiting for the effective date.
Right.
Effective date is July 1st.
First, right.
What, three weeks away, so, yeah.
And we've already advised secretaries and everything to go ahead and implement it as if it's passed now, as folks enroll.
I'd agree.
So again, the board...
So no zoning exemption needed.
The board should deny because it's not needed at this point.
Right.
That's my recommendation.
I'll make a motion to deny that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, can we just include in that that the intent of the board is that she remain at Segal?
Well, I think they go about the same, if it's denied based upon the loopiness of the issue, with the child attending Segal based on the mother's zoning, as per the law.
I think, though, the key to that is if mom remains in the Segal zone. So we couldn't add that language in there because of that, okay?
As long as that's her...
But, but you could come back and, and ask for a zone exemption if that occurs, and we would have this, we, it would go through another process. We would look at it from, from Mr. Evans and I, from there, you can appeal to me, and then, then go to the board. But right now, there's not really a need to apply for a zone exemption.
Okay. I would agree, so long as mother maintains her Segal address.
Yeah.
Segal, and her current address.
Right, absolutely.
It is a moot point.
That's right. I think you're right, Mr. Hodge, I think it's a withdrawal.
Just withdraw your request, right now.
Well, we could, we could move to withdraw the motion for zoning exemption.
If you all, as a family, want to withdraw the request, we can just handle it that way as well.
I think that's fine, I think that's the proper way to handle it.
Okay.
If it was in court, we would prepare an agreed order and submit it about a court proceeding, but we're...
None of us want to go back to court.
We're not that fancy tonight, it's okay.
As long as we achieve the result, that's all my fault.
Yes, sir.
So you'll receive a confirmation from ALC, and it's going to be to both parents, that based on your request, you've withdrawn your request for a zone exemption.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, the board and family is requesting their two children remain at Riverdale instead of Rockville High School. Is the board and family here? Come on up, please. We are, we are talking about two students tonight, one is a rising junior, one is a rising sophomore. The parents say they have other students attending Bradley Academy, the high school brothers help with transportation, the mom is a 911 dispatcher, and the dad is a deputy in Williamson County. One of the students is an ROTC, and one is an athlete. And please correct me if I've missed anything.
No, that, that's correct. We come here tonight for help, because we have a big family, we have six kids at home. And the older kids, no, I mean, we're, we're family, we help each other out, and they help with transportation for our younger ones. We have an older daughter, she's going to be a senior, and she's going to get to stay at Riverdale. We had an option of moving her to Rockville, but Rockville didn't have a color guard, and they don't have a competition band, which is, my son's in band also, they're not going to have either, not going to offer that. Taylor is great at color guard, she has a possibility of maybe getting a scholarship or something, we're hoping to continue. She has two state championship medals for color guard. And so we wanted her to be able to stay. With her staying, though, the only vehicle that we have is going to have to go with her. The boys would have to ride the bus. And right now, we have it worked out where if one needs to come home to get our little ones off the bus, they can take the car and they can go back. We live six, six minutes from Riverdale, three miles. They, they've walked home before, it's, it's not that far, if they needed to, if we couldn't get you there. We both work 12-hour shifts. He's on the SWAT team, I'm on the tactical dispatch team, we're on call all the time. So we have to depend on our older kids to, to take care of our younger kids. Also, Talon, he's our athlete, he has a 504 plan. We have realized over his journey that new things set him back. And it was just when he went to middle school, I, I didn't think he was going to make it to the sixth grade year, but by the time he was in eighth grade, he was making Bs and Cs, which would be great for him. At the end of this year, he was on AB honor roll with his bible for, for that last semester. But at the beginning of the year, he was making Ds and Cs and Fs in some classes. Moving him would be detrimental to that, and it would split up our family. They're, they're very close, and they, they ride in together, they come home together, and we'll have two drivers, one would, like I said, would be able to come home and take care of our other two children if the other one had practice. It allows them to continue being in those things that help us to keep them out of trouble. Idle hands is a devil's work, we have to keep them involved in order to keep them, because we can't always be there. We're at work 12-plus hours a day, and never knowing, that's, we're not at an eight, eight hour job, you know you're leaving at 3:30. If I get a 911 call at the time I'm leaving, I'm staying on that call, helping that person out until it's done. And he's, you know, has to go in for a SWAT call out at any time. He could be home, even on his days off, and have to go in, and we have to notify the kids, hey, you have to come home, have to be here in time for the kids to get off the bus, you have to take care of that. So that is our main things. I mean, Michael is an AB honor, AB student, he's an ROTC, and he's in band. Again, Rockville's not going to have a competition band at all. If Taylor had to go to Rockville, they wouldn't have that veterinary science, we've already figured that out, and I didn't even know that. So if we would have had to put her over there to keep them together to help a little bit, she wouldn't have been able to continue her pathway, and she's a rising senior. So these are our, it's our requests, I'm hoping that you won't deny us. With that traffic on Salem, they, they will be late, even if they all went to Rockville, I don't, I, there's no way they'd make it home in time for our kids to get off the bus, the little ones to get off the bus, and they'd be home alone. We can't just walk out and leave. He had to take off, he's in uniform, you know, because he had to come home early from training today, so that we could be here for this.
The little ones are eight and 10 years old, and they're both in elementary school, which puts, that would, would put them in three separate schools. You know, it's easiest if you have two, or one, but going to three separate schools, that's really hard. And then, you know, having to be home to receive an eight and 10-year-old off the bus, because you can't take them back and forth to school, it is really hard. I don't want them to have to try to walk into the door with a key, and then sit at home by themselves.
We don't have the best, now you're ahead, we live off the Middleton Street, I mean, we're, all of our kids are on free lunch. We, we don't have the funds. We, we're public service, and we don't have the funds to put them in before and after care. We just don't. And so we depend on the other kids to help us. And keeping them all at Riverdale would allow them to continue on their journey, continue to be able to do what, what they love to do, and keeps them out of trouble, and keeps them on the right path, and also continue for us to be as a family, help each other out.
What, what grade are the Bradley Academy kids in?
They're going to be gone in...
I'm not familiar with this, completely with the city schools' after-school program. Do they offer any sort of fee waivers for families who are on free reduced lunch?
We have not, I'll just be honest, we haven't looked into it, because we haven't had to. We have not, I'll just be honest, we haven't looked into it because we haven't had to. We've had the, the kids be able to come home and we've always been able to-
I thought they did, but I don't, I can't speak to it 100%, but typically-
Across the street, they have them and they're not very well off and they have to pay the full amount for, for them, whether they go or not. And that would be another thing. They wouldn't have to go every day. And we, we never know when this will happen. And so we would have to put them-
Evans, you're answering questions they do. I happen to have someone who actually worked there, sitting back there in the back. At one time, back in her career, she worked at ESP at Bradley Academy.
I thought there was some sort of discounted schedule. I wasn't 100% sure.
So when you reference three schools then, I guess then with a third and fifth grader, what we're talking about is you'll still have one in elementary, then you'll have one in middle, and then the others-
No, we would have two in two different high schools to keep Taylor.
Senior that's already been there for three years and has already created her own pathway.
At Riverdale?
At Riverdale.
Okay.
And then we would have two others at, uh, at Rockville.
Got it. Thank you.
Give me a record.
I, I, I just want to be clear about something. And I, I sympathize with you. I'm in the exact same boat. I've got a, a rising senior at Riverdale and a rising sophomore going to Rockville. And we're out in the country, so, um, and I have children in middle school, so we're all over the place. And thank you for serving our community. But I, I have a question about your students' after-school activities. Your argument is that you need your older students to be available to your younger students to help them in the home, which I can agree. But then you talk about their band and their football. So is there not an already scheduled after-school program that the younger students are going into when your older students are participating in all their extracurriculars?
Because they've always been able, we've always been able to manage. They, one of them will come home and, and we've worked it out with teachers or, you know, with their instructors that if we're not available, they'll come home, but they're still able to be in part of the program. And it's just both, um, the band and the football schedules are pretty equal. So they both have, will have a ride because they're, they get out about the same time. My son is in football. He, he has to stay sometimes a little bit for the band to get out. But, you know, it is what it is when we're not available. You know, it's, our schedules are so crazy, but we've talked to, and to these, the football and, and band instructors and they know that about us. So they're allowing that. There's been many a times my daughters come home and left the other so he could practice. And plus they have alternate schedules. Color guard doesn't always practice at the same time the band does. And so some days that the color guard will practice and she's able to come home. And then, Michael, we always have somebody that's able to come home if they're right there and they're six minutes from the school. I mean, six minutes from home. So they're able to come home, get them off the bus. And if they, they've even had, taken them back and been there with them at their practice so that, until we can get there.
Well, part of my concern though is, and what I'm missing in this equation, and maybe it's a moot point, but, um, the challenges of the younger children being home, which is a great safety concern, and I can understand that. But if you only have one vehicle, if we grant the zone exemption, then the other two students would not be able to ride the bus home as they are now. So you'd be in the same predicament potentially, right? Because you wouldn't have any transportation for your children.
Because we'd have two drivers. We have one car, but they'd be at the same school. So one could come home and one could stay for their activity. And the other one could, could come, you know, home the next time. We could, we alternate it. I mean, when they have to, they have to. Tonight, they're everywhere. They're at softball. My daughter's birthday is tonight, my eight-year-old. And we're here. So-
If we do it the other way, where we have two high schools, one driver could come home and the other one's going to have to come home on the bus, which is going to take 30 minutes at least for them to get home. So one can come home, but what if she has to stay up for school? What if she's got color guard? What if she's in band that night? What if she, she's got, she's in all sorts of activities of whatever? I mean, then, then you're like, well, I don't have anybody to pick up. We don't have any family around here to say, hey, Mom, Dad, can you pick up my kids? Because we don't have them. I don't have a cousin that I can call and tell you about. Can you pick up my kids tomorrow? I can't make it. I don't have that.
My sister's the only one that's close and she's-
That's in Woodbury.
She's in Woodbury and she's on a third round with, she must go to cancer in the trial right now. So she can't help us.
My dad has Parkinson's. They live in Nashville. We, and that's the only family that I have. So his family's in upstate New York. They're not, they're not here. So we don't have any other help. We help each other. I mean, and, and it's good for them. They're, they're good students and they're good kids because of it.
Help me out here just a little bit and I apologize for asking you to repeat something that you, I'm absolutely certain you've already said. You've got a third grader at, at Bradley, which is a mile from your house. And you got a fifth grader at Bradley, okay? The next child is sophomore-
Sophomore.
At Riverdale.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the football player.
Yes.
And you got a senior girl at Riverdale.
And we have a junior boy.
And a junior boy. I knew I skipped something. A junior boy at Riverdale and a senior girl at Riverdale. And the senior can, the senior can stay there or go to Rockville. You are aware of that.
Could have went to Rockville.
She's going to stay there.
She's staying.
Pathway.
Not arguing with that at all. I'm just, okay. So that's five, that's five children.
Our oldest, um, just graduated from Riverdale just a few weeks ago. Uh, she plans to go to Cumberland and she, actually I can't pretend on her. She'll be in college. So she's trying out the program.
She drives herself and going to the school.
She's going on the prom. And so she's, she's going to be driving there.
Next year, you'll have to add a school somewhere. The fifth grader will graduate. If they go to middle school-
Sixth grade at Bradley. So we actually have two years till that because they can-
Okay.
-go to Bradley.
Alright.
We've done that. Kind of staggered ours as they went up. We kept them sixth grade until the fifth, we sent them fifth and then we sent them both to middle school together. But it helped.
And the year after that, you'll still have three schools. Because the sixth grader will go to, go to middle and go to a middle school. And the third grader will be a fifth grader and the sophomore will be a senior.
Yes, that will be the only year. And at that point-
Right.
It will be, you know, we'll have both-
But that way, the, the sophomore this year and the junior this year and the senior will all be driving. Will all be able, be able to help out. They'll all be, by the time you're talking, three years down the road, they'll all be three years older. Okay? So what we're looking at is a-
They can come home by themselves.
A 20-year-old, a 19-year-old and an 18-year-old instead of a 17, 16 and 15-year-old. And those will all be able to drive and should be able to help out. But we can't rely on what we have now. There's, there's nobody to rely on.
We're cutting two years, so he would be 12 and she would be 10. I would feel more comfortable with them coming in if they need to do that.
You must have some great kids. Y'all, y'all are two and a half blocks from me, but I don't know you at all, but you, you must have some great kids.
We do. They're going to, they're going with our church in a few weeks to do a, a mission trip, all four of the older ones. They're great kids. They have no troubles and most of them are AB honors, you know, and even Talon this year was AB at the end of the year. We were completion. First time ever.
Mr. and Mrs. Boardman.
Mr. and Mrs. Boardman.
Well, I, um, and, and go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll come back to something. Well, I, I think one of the principles, I believe Mr. Nance said that, um, he was, he was, he was okay with this and now naturally I can't find it, but, um, he did, he did circle no. He did do that. Because of the, the, the new zone moratorium, but, well, that's a lot on this family. Go ahead.
Well, and that was one of the first things I was going to say is, um, I'm feeling your pain and your angst. And I can't relate from the perspective that Ms. Johnson can because I only have two and there were 10 years between them, so I never had to worry about that kind of juggling. However, I can relate to the, first of all, not wanting a child that young home alone. I mean, I wouldn't even consider it for my youngest until I think he was 13 or 14. And we lived in a neighborhood where there are a lot of stay-at-home moms that could keep their eyes open. So different scenario. However, I was a working mom. I can relate to the crazy schedules and being on call. And I did use the ESP program for, for both of my sons because they were in elementary school in the city school system. So I guess, to me, it kind of begs the question, and I understand not wanting to have to put kids in after-school, but if it's a financial challenge for them to do the ESP at Bradley, if that can be overcome, would that not be a reasonable option that could resolve this?
I'm not sure it can be overcome. I mean, I, I'm not exactly sure what the figures were of the ESP program.
Sure.
I don't think we qualify for a, a re-use or free whatever fee for the ESP program. I don't think we qualify for that.
Last year and I can't remember and I haven't looked into it this long for them to, to do that. But even if we did, any, any amount would, would be hard on us. And it's not necessary every day. He's working, we're dating, they, who's home sometimes? I'm, I'm home sometimes. And then all their kids, when they're there, they're, they're home. And, and so it, it's not an everyday thing. It would be, you know, two times a week maybe that they might need to stay for a few hours for somebody to get to them. Or maybe even if they're going all the way from Rockville, an hour? I mean, if they're coming from Riverdale, they could be there when they get off the bus. They have six minutes. It just doesn't make sense for us to put them in a program, any kind of payment, when they don't need to be there every day.
Director Spurlock, do you, do you know, I know you mentioned earlier that, that there can be concessions made as far as the, the fees for the ESP. And I'm sure a lot has changed since I had one in ESP, no doubt. But I know back when we did, um, there were like partial day and daily rates. Do they still do that? Do you know?
I don't think so. Because when we looked into it, it was happening before.
I'm looking at their website. It doesn't offer that information.
Okay.
I'm trying to see if they have. Fee scheduling.
Yeah, I don't see one. But they do. Well, they have in the last virtual year.
I think you're right, Dr. Sir.
Tell me again what it is that you do.
My daughter wants to dispatch her at Williamson County.
Okay.
I'm on the tactical incident. So if the AB incidents go out and I have to go and dispatch separately for those big events, something that he might have to go to as a SWAT.
You're law enforcement.
I am. I'm a deputy in Williams County.
Deputy what?
I'm a deputy in Williams County. I'm a supervisor on day shift.
Thank both of you for your service.
So you would never know if you needed after-school care or not?
No, not until last minute. And we could always depend on the kids because the kids are coming home. And we could just tell them to stay. You can't stay. You have to come home today. And their, their extracurricular activities have to take a back burner. But if they had to go to Rockville, they wouldn't be able to do it area.
There's a lot of times, and I, I can speak for both of us, that, you know, whether we have to stay over for five minutes to answer a call, you know, or I have to stay over five hours because I have a barricaded suspect in, into a house, is a lot different than knowing my situation that I'm coming home at 5:00 and I need my son or my kids to be in ESP for an hour. You know, I don't, I don't know that. And if my daughter is, is not able to pick them up until she gets out of her color guard at 8:00 at night, then that's a long time to be in ESP and I don't even think they go that long. So there, there's, there's a lot of variables that come into my job other than just coming home after the work is done because the work doesn't ever get finished until the work is done. Not like we punch in and punch out every day.
We could say, go home on the bus today. And then, oh no, you can't. We have to call the school. And I, I don't, I can't always step away to even call and do that. I'm going to quick text to my daughter to say, hey, you got to come home. You know, I can't necessarily call the school and say, hey, my kids got to stay. And then it's late and I think it's okay and I'm leaving at 2:00. And they get out at, you know, 3:00 or whatever. And I don't have time to call. And then it's 3:30 or 4:00 and I'm going, they went home on the bus. They're home by themselves. I couldn't call. I couldn't text. I know that my kids are coming home. I know that they'll be there for them. Or I, it's a quick text where I can't necessarily get off of a 911, go call and say, hey, I need you to stay in ESP today. So even if I could afford it, even if that works out when we get a three, I, you know, there'd be days where I wouldn't want to take that extra drive, you know, to go get them every day when they can ride the bus home, which they do. And, and, and say, oh no, last minute, I, they're going to have to stay in ESP and I have to find out. I have to figure out a way to, to tell the school staff. I'm just, I'm afraid that they would come home one day and then we'll be there.
Mr. Chairman, if there are not any other questions, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. Any other questions, be fine.
Do you have information? I did find a fee schedule. There is a daily drop-in rate versus a weekly. It appears there are some discounted rates available. It doesn't say where those are.
Doesn't say what, it doesn't say any of what the rates are?
Well, it says for full pay where it is.
What's the full pay?
Uh, the daily rate, drop-in day is $70 a day. A weekly is $52 a week.
Per child?
Per child.
That'd be $104 a week. That'd be almost $500 a month for us to have our child into after-school care. I mean, why put the burden of, of financial, you know, problems on us when it doesn't need to be? The problem is easily solvable by just transferring the kids into one school and then the problem would be solved. So instead of us having to pay an extra $500, but I don't know what I'm going to have to do. I'm going to work overtime. I'm going to have to find, I'm going to have to find the next kid up to be able to afford the $500 a month.
One, one more question. You're, you're Bradley Academy students. Do they ride the bus or do they get picked up?
They do. They ride the bus.
And what time does that school get dismissed? Do we know?
They get dismissed at-
They get home at 4:00.
They get, they get home from the bus around 4:00. They, they dismiss at 3:30. And our other kids, they're, they get dismissed, I guess this next year they'll be doing the same thing, but they still only have a six-minute drive. They can make it there before the bus gets there from, from Riverdale. I think they're having a new bell time, which they did get released at 2:50. But even if they get released at the same time, they can still make it home in time for our program.
So your Rockville students would ride the bus, correct, if they went?
They would, they would have.
Oh, they would have to.
Okay.
Yeah, but they would be-
Drive them and they would have to ride the bus.
But they wouldn't get home in time. But if I had them all at Riverdale, one of those students could come home. They have two drivers. One of them could come home.
None of them would ride the bus to Riverdale?
No, they would all ride in that same car.
Right.
Well, Riverdale traffic, by the way, is not six minutes. My kids go there and it takes them forever to get out of Riverdale traffic. So I admire your enthusiasm about that, but that's not true.
It takes about 10 minutes for them. 10 to 15 minutes, but even still that would get them there right at the same time.
Since the after-school i- is the issue here, and that's, that's my holdup. I'll be honest. I, I sympathize with you again. I'm in the same boat. My kids are in activities. We make sacrifices every day. Our older kids pick up. We have no family here either. So it resounds with me. But at the same time, we have to try to solve this problem in, in the best way for everybody. And since it's not an academic issue, and that's, that's really what my focus is at this moment, it's not an academic issue. It's not that your students aren't being offered the same advantages at all schools. They're getting equal at all the schools to this point.
It is kind of academic. It's, if, number one-
I'm talking specifically about their classes. So their pathways are going to be available. But none of that is mentioned in any of this.
No, because if we have to go, if we have to take other two kids and put them to Rockville, I'm going to take my senior out and put her over into Rockville. Why? Because I need transportation to go home.
Right, and that's what I was getting to.
She doesn't have a pathway where.
My, my one that has a 504, the disruption of that, of going into a new school, I'm afraid of what that academic would do to him.
All things being equal, I was just trying to kind of problem solve here for you. Just ask, throwing some things out there. So if your students at Rockville, your child stays at Riverdale, but you have the two students at Rockville and they get on the bus and they dismiss at 3:30, correct? They're going to take a bus home. Then your Bradley Academy students also dismiss at 3:30. So they're going to get home pretty close at the same time.
No, you're talking, Rockville from us is 12 miles. And, and, and Bradley from us is, is less than a mile. It's a mile from our house. It does not take them, it takes them about 25 minutes or 20 minutes to get home with the stops that they made. It would probably likely, I don't know that, but it would likely be an hour. You're talking, if it's a 20, it's, it's 30 minutes good with the traffic from our house because we're over Middleton Street. So, and that's on a good time.
And with all the, with all the instruction on the same, on the same, I don't know what.
They could, there's no way they would make it home.
No way. We can't make it to church on time on Sunday.
No. Plus we have to take the kids to get ready for church, so.
Good question I had. Number one, if all three of them went to Rockville, you could make it work.
I can't do it. Only if I want to punish my husband.
I'm saying that.
She can't do what she wants.
Listen, listen what I got to say. Uh, next year, you still got these two at Riverdale that ought to be going to Rockville.
They would be able to drive. They would be able to drive home.
You, you going to send them to Rockville next year?
No, we wanted to keep them at Riverdale because it's close to home. That's the only thing that's possible.
I understand that, but there's not a lot of other people out there who'll do the same thing.
Not everybody has our situation, sir.
I understand. I'm sure there's a lot of them that, that haven't got these. But, uh, I sympathize with you, but so what I'm saying is, is, uh, we're allowing two that shouldn't be going to Rockville, stay at, say, at Riverdale. And basically, what we're saying or what you're wanting is allowing the whole, their whole life to-
So only, you're talking three years.
I'm saying.
And me, for, for them to continue. I got a, you know, junior, he's, this is two years.
I'm saying.
I mean-
Is that the situation of everybody that's stood up here or anybody that, they've come up with, with sophomores and juniors and freshmen to ask if they can have a zone exemption? Or obviously they're not asking for just this year.
They want the whole time.
The whole time because they want to stay where they, either they've begun or where they want to finish, or there's, there's some kind of tradition behind it. Or there's, there's a financial burden, but they've all asked for the time to complete where they're at school.
We never, we never thought we'd be here. As close as we are to Riverdale, we never thought we'd be here, sir. We never thought that.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm, what I'm telling you is how, how many have been denied that are, that you're not even hearing about.
I don't know. There's-
I'm just telling you. I, I've sat on this floor 15 years and I've seen a lot of them. And, uh, I sympathize with you, but I mean, I've got to look at everyone else also.
Again, I, I don't, we tend to give you our unique situation, which is not. I mean, I- Again, I don't, we tend to give you our unique situation, which is not, I mean, I can probably guarantee you that no one has our situation. No one has six kids with 12-hour shifts with on-call schedules that depend on those drivers to be there, that depend on their older kids to be there for the younger, because of their work schedules, because they serve the public, sir. That's not everybody's situation. That's not everybody's situation. That's ours.
Our problem is that we have to be fair and consistent. That's our issue here. We have to make sure the rules apply to everyone.
Yes, sir.
And I understand your hardships. But we still have to make, at the end of the day, we've got to make sure that we're being fair.
Yes, sir. Totally understand.
Any other questions? Come a motion?
Yes, sir.
I think, based on the hardship, I think, of this family, the unusual spacing of the children in the schools, and they have some off, some pressures on their family with health that have nothing to do with this zoning particularly, and certainly with both of them being clearly hardworking public service. That's the reason for my motion. And my motion is to allow this request.
Second.
Sir?
Discussion, Mr. Chairman. You know, when we go into these, I look at the rules, but I also think about hardship. And it's my opinion that with everything that's been shared with us tonight from these parents, the number of children they have and the logistics, it boggles my mind even to think about it. And based on your jobs and those demands, I think if there is a case that we've heard, whether tonight or any time before, that typifies hardship, I believe this one is it. So if Ms. Sharp hadn't beaten to it, I would have seconded the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Ms. Michael, Chicago.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Esses?
No.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you so much.
You all received letters from me. That's what you would use to mention this.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, our 10th appeal tonight. Ms. Hernandez is requesting her child attend Stewart's Creek High School instead of Laverne High School. The student is an incoming freshman. Mother is a class 100-year senior at Grove Elementary School. Daughter wants to pursue the dentistry program. Stewart's Creek is an overcrowded school, and as part of his own plan, existing students at Stewart's Creek will make them leave, as we've heard tonight, to go to Blackpool. So we do not see this appropriate for still allow new student to attend who have never attended, or has no other students leave who are already invested in the school.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Marquin. I'm Vanessa Marquin's sister. This is my mother, Lorna Hernandez. And due to her being overwhelmed with the whole situation, I will be, she wrote like a small speech, so I will be the one dictating it for you guys. Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank you very much for the time and opportunity to present the zone exemption appeal for my daughter Vanessa. My name is Lorna Hernandez, and I have been a Rutherford County employee for 17 years. Currently, I am an educational assistant at Cedar Grove Elementary, and I am passionate about helping all students achieve their maximum intellectual capacity. As a school employee, I am very aware of the importance of education and the future success of students. As, and as such, I am here as an advocate for my daughter and her education. Our neighboring school system, Metro Schools, currently has a school choice program that allows students to apply to an optional school based on their interests regardless of zoning. Their website states that they believe every student should have access to schools that best meets their needs to prepare them for success. In my hometown state of Texas, or in my home state of Texas, students in districts such as Fort Bend, where my sister resides, are also allowed to apply to different schools based on areas of interest. And Rutherford County, too, has an excellent CTE program that allows students to learn and discover specific career pathways. However, these career pathways are only open to students zoned to particular schools that offer them. CTE programs have been shown to be extremely beneficial to students. Here is school solutions, so this is one of the research articles that we read, explains on their website that students that go through CTE programs gain the ability to make better-informed decisions and are able to gain insight into careers and majors without spending money. I am here defending my daughter's right to access one of those CTE programs. Vanessa's extremely interested in pursuing a career in the dental field. Unfortunately, the only high school in Rutherford County that offers the CTE program is Stewart's Creek High School. My request was denied based on capacity levels. As a school employee, I completely understand the importance of maintaining capacity levels, and I know firsthand the effects of overcrowding. But Vanessa has benefited from being zoned exempt before, all throughout her school journeys, that were considered to be at capacity level. So, for example, Cedar Grove Elementary was at capacity level at the time. Rock Springs, all three years, at capacity each and every single time. But you guys thankfully have granted her to be accepted into that school. In the past, it was a privilege granted to all school employees to be, to have this opportunity. I am begging you to please grant her her zone exemption one more time. I would implore you to consider the fact that this program is unvaluable, is unavailable anywhere else in this county. In an article published in Rutherford Works in 2018, Mrs. Christina Walker, a teacher at Stewart's Creek High, explained that she took some of her health science students into Interfaith Dental Clinic, so that they can gain a real-world experience about careers that they have interest in. This is what I'm seeking from my daughter. I want Vanessa to have the best education possible, and I believe that attending Stewart's Creek, and specifically in the dental career pathway, will be instrumental in her career. Members of the school board, college applications and admissions get competitive more each year. Most people are aware of the recent scandals with the Hollywood actress that committed fraud in order to help her daughter get into college. It was a desperate measure, because that's how highly competitive every school is nowadays. I know that Vanessa's chances of attending the college of her choice will greatly improve if she attends the CTE pathway. And then, according to Foster Education, students that are in CTE programs are better prepared for collegiate-level classes. Their resumes reflect enriched educational experience. Members of the Board of Education, two years ago, I was given the news that no one wants to hear. I was diagnosed with neuroendocrine cancer. I am doing everything in my power to be around for my children as long as I can, but with such a diagnosis, there's no guarantees. I have no idea if I will be around to help her during college admissions process, but I know I'm here now, and I'm going to fight to get my daughter the best education possible. It is not her fault that our house is not zoned to the school that offers the CTE program that she's interested in. I'm begging you to please approve our request so that Vanessa can have the same opportunity as other kids that are zoned to Stewart's Creek High. Vanessa has an excellent academic record, participates in athletics, and many extracurricular activities, including Beta Club, Student Council, you name it, she's in it. If given the opportunity, Vanessa will work hard at Stewart's Creek and continue being an active part of her school. Trust me, it will not be an opportunity that will be taken for granted. Thank you.
You did say we've turned other students down for this.
And we were actually sending sophomores out of Stewart's Creek and what was formerly zoned to Stewart's Creek, of rising ninth graders.
Any question?
Could the student go to Laverne High School and still go to Stewart's Creek for the dentistry program, if they provided their own transportation, or?
We have done that in the past, if they could provide their own transportation. The dentistry program entirely, can correct me if I'm wrong, it's Health Sciences, you take your first two years, correct? It's not until that third year that you actually start specializing into dentistry.
That is correct.
We've done that before in the past, if it's feasible, I mean, with schedules and transportation, all those sorts of things. But that falls back on the family to be able to do that. And if there's room in the program, that's another consideration.
Are those classes offered at Laverne currently?
The first two years are currently offered at Laverne. It's that third and possibly the fourth year that would be at Stewart's Creek.
So realistically, she could attend Laverne until she gets to that point, and then come back and ask for a zoning exception?
Or however that would work out, yes.
Is that something that the family could do?
That's what I mean, because even, you know, through the process that I'm going through, I mean, she needs also good friends, you know, emotional support.
Yeah. It's not like an easy process. She's had to sit through tough doctor's appointments, telling her mom, this potentially might be, you know, the next step. This is, might be the range. Maybe we're looking at a couple of years, you really don't know, just depending on the progression of things, how, you know, how things go. So we're just asking that, you know, if she starts at a high school, we'd like her to, you know, stay with those people, that way, her emotional support, because, you know, we never know, like, you know, nothing's guaranteed. So, so that's, you know, that's a big reason to, emotionally, how that can affect it, especially, you know, 14-years-old, they're just down like grown up, that it can really affect.
So I just want to make sure I've read everything correctly. I believe that I have. The student, your daughter, is just going to be an upcoming freshman, right? She has, so this will be her first year attending any high school?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. But she's been, you know, since she's been at Cedar Grove, for the elementary school, and then middle school, Rock Springs Middle. So, you know, she has a bunch, you know, a bunch of friends that she's going, you know. And I know that with my situation, you know, they'll be there for her in case, you know.
So Rock Springs is a feeder to Stewart's Creek? Rock Springs Middle, where does it feed?
It's a feeder to Laverne.
It's a feeder to Laverne and Smyrna.
Smyrna.
Jen Stewart.
It's possible there's some in Stewart's Creek. But the intent of the employee rule is for the, I mean, the initial, the initial intent is for the employee to be able to take their child to where they work. And if the grade level is not offered, then they would go to a feeder school. But she's already zoned to a feeder school. It's directly across the street from where the mom works, Laverne High School, and Cedar Grove are, I mean, practically.
Oh, yeah, that's my son.
I mean, they're right across the street there on Wolverine Trail.
Yeah, walking distance.
Channing, whichever one that is. So, I mean, that's, that's the reason it doesn't necessarily qualify in this employee.
And this program is offered for two years at Laverne High School?
Health Sciences.
Health Sciences, the career cluster, and so the first, it's kind of like the agriculture. The first year, everyone takes Health Science education. The second year, they can take the medical therapeutics. And then the third and the fourth year is where it becomes specialized.
Okay. Let me worry about one and two first.
Yes, sir.
Are those offered at Laverne High School both?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, I'm not arguing with you, but it's right across the street. You can see it from the front of the school.
Right, but nothing also guarantees that after the two years, you know, that she can get into Stewart's Creek because of the zoning again. So we would have to, you know, do this process again. So, you know, regardless, it would still be an issue per se, if she does want to, unless, like, a special circumstance, but I don't know.
But even if, even if we did allow it this year, you would have to come back each subsequent year.
For this name, it'd be?
I have to ask her again, for me, here, from her emotions, you know. I mean, she's already going through a lot of my process that I'm going through. And I do want to make sure that she's still with her friends. I mean, her friends, I mean, I promise you that they're all, I mean, from Stewart's Creek, that's zoned for that area. And I have a list of names, and I even have the list of the person that is, you know, that is willing to help us out with transportation, which is means wrong that wouldn't work. And, I mean, like, I have, you know, I really don't, I really, I'm begging you, please, to let allow her to go to Stewart's Creek.
Have you considered looking at a job that would be zoned for Stewart's Creek High School?
My position is actually system-wide. So I could be transferred to any school, depending, you know, of the need of the school. But I would be a educational assistant.
I've been looking into Stewart's Creek schools, but unfortunately, as of right now, there isn't any openings for her to do. She talked to...
No feeder schools or anything has any openings?
I mean, that's... Now, I also want to remind the board, of course, I know you already know this, but we're actually rezoning ninth-grade students and 10th-grade students out of Stewart's Creek. You know, I mean, you know.
Those taking zone exemptions anyway.
Right.
And Mr. Evans, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm guessing, and I certainly am not without empathy or understanding to your situation, I certainly am. And, but I would also venture what's probably a pretty good guess, that many, many of the students that applied, or parents that applied for zoning exemptions, did so because they didn't want to pull their kids away from their friends or their social circles, that, you know, if we granted everybody that, we would have no rezoning. We wouldn't be able to accomplish what we need to do with opening a new school. Mr. Evans had, and I know that sometimes pathways do become a consideration, but have we ever allowed that to be a consideration for a child that hadn't even started into high school yet?
Typically. The closest thing that we've done, which I mentioned earlier, was that let them go to their zoned school to do those foundation classes, and then consider if they can, if the family has transportation, it can get them there, and there's space available in the program, letting them take those one or two courses. I mean, honestly, that's not usually feasible for someone to leave school during the middle of the day. This depends on their schedule and all those sorts of things. But she could take Health Sciences as a pathway at Laverne High School. It wouldn't end with the dentistry program, but she could specialize in another area.
Right.
Which could also be applicable to dental school later on, depending on where she's applying.
Thank you. And a lot of times, whenever they get to their third and fourth level, they will take what's called a clinical internship. And so what they can do is, if dentistry is her area that she's wanting, they can, like, like your article said, they can take a rotation at the Interfaith Dental Clinic, and we work with them all the time. And so that may be something, if she does have to stay at, or, you know, she ends up at Laverne, that dentistry is not out of the picture. I mean, if that's her interest, then she can tell her Health Science teachers, and they can help make that one of her rotations. Yes, it is something new. Yes, yes, it is new, so.
Any other questions? Whenever I read these things, and I don't know how the rest of the board does it exactly, but my attitude is, I kind of try to look for something, some reason to agree with the person. That's just me, all right? Most of the time, I can't find any, all right? But I see my notes here on yours, and this could be granted if it was an emergency, okay? Full school or not. But now, I mean, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry, and I agree with her. I mean, I'm understanding and sympathetic with your problem. This is not an emergency. As a matter of fact, if there is one, it's the fact that Stewart's Creek's overcrowded, and has been for quite a while. and has been for quite a while. And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that I can't agree with you, but I don't.
We have a motion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, move to uphold the decision to deny the zoning request.
Second.
Thank you. Got that Ms. Michaels? All the row?
Ms. Moore?
Yay.
Mr. Yan?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Last page, if that makes you feel any better. Number eleven. Uh, the Aponte family is requesting their child attend Rocky Fork Elementary School instead of Christiana Elementary School. This is an incoming kindergartner. Are the parents here? This is a kindergarten, a new kindergarten enrolling. Uh, the, the parents work in Smyrna and they have, the child has a one-year-old sibling who attends daycare in Smyrna. Rocky Fork Elementary School is, of course, our new school opening. It's expected to open with approximately eight hundred and fifty students. Uh, there's also concern that the younger sibling will want to attend the same school once it, once that child becomes school age, and then from there would want to continue with Rocky Fork Middle and Stewart's Creek High School. So for all those reasons, that's why we have denied it. We, we expect Rocky Fork won't have capacity for too long. Within a couple of years, it will likely be full.
Thank you.
Um, yes, how he mentioned, we both work in Smyrna. We moved from Puerto Rico because life was not good there. So we moved to give a better life to our kids. Um, we found a job that we can actually come up, give our needs. We work in Smyrna, we work, our works are like beside each other. I work in Yasaki, well, I'm supply change, and he's a cardinal health, so we're like across each other. Our works, hours are eight up to sometimes even eight o'clock. So what we're doing right now is just, they both go to the same daycare in Christiana, so at five, we go pick them and then unfortunately we bring them to work. It's not good, but we have to do it. Um, our son was born with a warmer heart, um, so his vein from, the vein from the heart from the, to the pool moon, it's pretty tight. So his air, it's not going fluent to its pool moon, so we have to take him to Vanderville every three to six months. So they do a echo and all those kinds of stuff to see how his heart is. And if he's not doing good in the next year, he will be doing a catheter so he can get his vein open. Um, the main reason we have them in Smyrna, so it's close to him and we can take him as soon as we go to Nashville, because he got to be treated at Vanderville, uh, because they're the best right now in the heart. Um, we could potentially have them in Murphysboro so they can pick up Christiana, however, with our kids' needs. And actually, uh, we both play sports in college, so we tried to put her in sport two years ago when she was three. She played soccer, however, she was always getting tired, so I was like, probably it's normal. We took her to the doctor and they say he potentially have, she potentially have asthma. So now she always have a pump, I always have the pump in my purse, and every time she plays something, she has to get that pump before every game. This past year, I have to went to the school a couple times to give her the pump during lunch, and it was pretty beneficial that we have her close to our work. From where we work, it's around, I would say eight minutes from work to daycare. And from the school, if we put her in Christiana, it would be around probably thirty-five to forty minutes if there's no traffic. Um, the main reason we moved to here because we found a house. It was our range. And we come from Puerto Rico, there's, in Puerto Rico, there's no zoning school, so we were not aware of any of this zoning school. In Puerto Rico, if you live here, you can take your kids where you want to. And actually, the school that she's going now, Christiana, Christian, Community Christian Day School, they told us that's not how US work. But that's what we started working on, the school exemptions. And that's what we started our process so late, because we were not aware of any of this. And that's the main thing.
Questions?
I do have a question. Um, Ms. Evans, in our notes, it indicated that, um, the children are both in daycare in Smyrna, but you indicated that they're actually in a daycare in Christiana right now. Is that correct?
No, they're in Smyrna. I have both letters here.
Okay, okay. No, and that's fine. I believe, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that.
Motion?
Make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, and, and this is a tough one. And again, I'm not without compassion. Please understand that. Um, but I don't see enough exception as far as extreme hardship or anything that I would recommend overturning this, um, decision on the zoning. So I would so move, if it's time for a motion, to uphold, uh, the not denial of this zoning exemption request.
Second.
Motion being made to overturn? Second?
Not overturn.
No, to not overturn. To support.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The denial. Yeah, it gets confusing, I know.
Okay, okay. I forgot that, I was wrong.
Mics aren't working tonight, it's hard to hear.
Hey, Ms. Michaels, Coleroe?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Yan?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, number twelve, Mr. Stephen Davis requests his child remain at Riverdale High School instead of Rockvale High School. Mr. Davis, are you here? Come up, please. Uh, the student is a, an eleventh grader. Uh, the parent says the student is a member of the Riverdale Singers and wants to pursue choir in college for scholarships. Uh, just so you're aware, Rockvale High School will offer a choir program.
Yes, um, first of all, I wasn't nervous when I walked in here today, but after watching this, I'm pretty dang nervous right now. But anyway, uh, a little bit about Garrett's history, and I'm not as, telling you about his history for any type of, uh, of special request, but more so you know where he's coming from. When Garrett was born, he was born with a heart condition, and he had open heart surgery at eight months old. Well, that kept Garrett from doing things that other kids normally do, like sports throughout school age. Well, just this last year, uh, well, after he started high school, as a freshman, he decided to do choir. And then his sophomore year, he just had another open heart surgery where he did the Ross procedure, they took his, well, um, healthy pulmonary valve, moved it to his aortic valve, and now he's fairly healthy, but he's still restricted. But one place that he's not restricted is in choir and in singers. And while it is choir and Rockvale will offer choir, they're not going to offer singers, not next year. And Garrett's done what most sophomores don't do. He's made singers as a sophomore. It's unheard of. He's also made mid-state. He's made honor choir. He's made mid-state again in sophomore year. He made honor choir again in sophomore year. Next year, he will compete to be honor choir at New York City at Carnegie Hall. He will also compete to, uh, to go to all-state as a junior. That's not offered as a freshman and sophomore. All this builds his resume for college. His goal is to get into Belmont as a student in choir. And, uh, we feel that sending him back to Rockvale not only will wipe away what he's done, he goes back to restrictions he's had most of his life. So while it's not a collegiate program or a baccalaureate program at a school, it is to us because of his circumstances.
Question for Mr. Evans. Reading, just to, just to clarify that, on the original zoning exemption form, the receiving principal, in other words, the, which, who would be the principal at Riverdale, where Garrett wishes to stay, um, recommended and was okay with him remaining at Riverdale, correct?
Mr. Lucre vote, uh, recommended no, and Mr. Nance recommended yes.
Any, and Ms. Pilgrim, I don't know if this is something that really falls into your bailiwick or not with the choir, um, but can anyone speak to the, you know, as far as the advanced level of choir that this young man's had access to and could continue down that pathway versus just being in choir at Rockvale, or is something more going to be offered at Rockvale?
I was at Riverdale when I was a teacher, and Ms. Williams has a stellar program. I know there will be a great program at Rockvale. I just, I don't know anything about the, who's going to be the choir, like, I don't know that part. I know Riverdale does have a really good, um, advanced choir program, so I do know that.
Could you concur for me then that with, based on her background and the history here, that, um, those opportunities, those doors might be more readily open to him because of her program?
Definitely. She has, um, a wide range of connections and pool in the musical, um, you know, field, so.
My concern with that is we've turned down some for athletics that, that's been brought up. And, and, um, and Mr. Nance is, I understand, that should have been a no, because we said in the beginning that unless it was something that we would agree upon. So he, he was, in, in the very beginning, he was signing a bunch of, of yeses and until he was redirected on the no's.
I do remember that, yes.
I don't think ours was at the beginning, was it?
April first is when we received it. Um, Mr. Nance signed it on March twenty-second, so.
He would like to speak if he could?
I was, I was sending up classes at Riverdale in the cafeteria. I asked, uh, first, he was sending up classes with me, and I asked him if they're going to have an advanced program in choir, and they said that they won't and that their choir would be based from ninth to twelfth grade, just a basic start off, and won't offer as many, um, things as this Williams choir will.
I understand that you've denied sports, but they announced to the football coaches at Rockvale in the paper, and everybody's proud of that. They announced to the, the next baseball coach is going to be at Rockvale, but I haven't been announcing who the choir teacher's going to be, so it's not the same.
I'm not sure, sir, that it, I mean, they've announced a lot of teachers too, have they not? I don't even know who the choir director is.
Exactly.
My, my, my thing is, it's, it's, if it's concerning providing opportunities for him to get college paid for or some things like that, that works both ways. We, we have fantastic fine arts in our, in our system that provides greater opportunities. But what I'm saying is, if we're consistent, if we're, and, and I'm not saying we're not, but I'm saying if we're, if we're inconsistent, then that creates issues for, for our board.
I understand that, yeah.
I think the issue with this, if I may, um, is the nod to Carnegie Hall. And that's what is setting everything. Well, and, and I guess I look at this more to, I, I, I don't see, and unless somebody can really show me otherwise, I don't really see how this parallels with zoning exemptions or, um, being denied based on sports. I mean, we've had athletes here tonight, and I understand that wasn't their reason for the zoning exemption request, but yet they are indeed T double S double A athletes that are still going to get to stay at their schools and play. And personally, what I'm hearing from Garrett and his parents is that I view this as a lot more of a, an academic pathway in his pathway to college, um, with the opportunities that this program presents to him. So to me, this would be very equivalent to, say, for instance, if he were in the Blackman Collegiate Academy.
But we also, this, said this is choir, and choir's being offered at, at Rockvale. I mean, I think that was brought up too. And I don't think I meant it that way, and I apologize, I didn't mean it about the foot, the sports and stuff, but I'm talking about in the very beginning in rezoning, that was one of the things that this board said, is that athletics would not play a part in it, no matter if, and, and we had many people come up in the rezoning process, talk about their son was being looked at from any, any, everyone from University of Louisville to Notre Dame.
I'll be honest with you, um, I, if, if my, he was playing baseball or football, we'd be all over Rockvale because
Right.
he can still play baseball, football at Rockvale, and he can still excel. He can't go to Carnegie Hall next year at Rockvale. He can't compete for state next year at Rockvale. We even asked, because we were considering sending him to Rockvale after several denial letters, we went to Ms. Williams and said, "Ms. Williams, can, if he goes to Rockvale, can you still recommend him for state?" She says, "No, his teacher will have to do that, and with a startup program, it's unlikely that that will happen." That is, to me, is taking something off his college resume that is, that's just not, it's just like you said, it's the collegiate program to us.
I believe what Ms. Pilgrim said, at least that's how I, uh, equated it, is this, uh, Ms. Williams has a lot of contacts and has a history of producing good students and has a lot of contacts, um, that a new program, when you walked in the door, not that that teacher's not a great teacher, but they don't have the history and the contacts that the school teacher, Ms. Williams, has.
It might not be a new teacher, though.
Correct.
It'd be one who came from somewhere else.
To my understanding, sir, it's an art teacher.
It's a what?
An elementary choir teacher.
I, I, I just want to say, and, and I, I understand your, your position, and it's, it's unique to you, but it's not unlike almost every student who's getting a rezone. They don't want to. Rockvale is going to be a new school, and so some of the opportunities are going to be a little bit different. Um, I can appreciate that. But it, once, it's a slippery slope. Once we start over making a decision to allow youth for choir, although that, that is your passion and it's unique to you, there are hundreds of other students who are making the same argument for their, their extracurricular or future goals. And so how, we can't, with what we've just done in our rezoning, it's very hard to reconcile, how do we cherry pick which child deserves that opportunity, as you saw with the dental student. It, it's very hard for us to make a decision, if it was an academic, academic, an AP class that wasn't being offered, or if there was something heavy. Again, you saw that with the, the dental student. Um, I, I think I could be more inclined to go in your direction, but, um, you have an opportunity. I have a rising sophomore, as I've said already. Uh, my child is a swimmer. They don't have a pool at Rockvale. Every day we have this conversation, "But mom, but mom." I, I, I'm going to tell you the same thing I tell him. You have an opportunity, although it might not be with Ms. Williams, if you go to Rockvale, you have an opportunity to make that program exceptional and, and leave your mark on it. And I know that's tough, but there are hundreds of other students, I mean, we, we would have to have an open district if we started allowing all these, um, reasonable requests, but challenging for me, and I don't mean to speak for my fellow board members, but that's my position currently.
I'll say one thing.
Mm-hmm.
There's only one sophomore in singers. This one.
It's not that I would love to go to Rockvale. It's going to be grade school, it's like, it's huge, it looks really nice, it's awesome. But, uh, it's not that I'm afraid to leave a new mark on the program, it's that I'm afraid that if I do leave seniors, that I won't get the opportunities and abilities that I will get at Rockvale. Oh, yes, at Rockvale.
I understand that.
I have checked with Mr. Lucre while we had this discussion. His choir teacher, his name is Chris Marks, he's coming to us from a magnet school in Robertson County and has experience teaching choir, and he is a graduate of the Belmont Music Program. Just at that question, I didn't know who it was either to this point, but, uh, let's see.
The, the perfect rezoning procedures, which has seemingly been going on
The perfect rezoning procedures, which has seemingly been going on here for about 50 years, but certainly in the last few months, the perfect one is that you don't rezone anybody. Everybody goes where they want, and, and then we can all go home early. Unfortunately, that doesn't put 1,600 students at Rockvale, and it doesn't do anything for our overcrowding, which is rampant, as I'm sure you are aware. I, I sympathize with, with, with what you're going through here. I, I will tell you this, we have a history of this that, and since I was teaching at Riverdale at that time, in the second year it was a school, and Riverdale and Oakland, then we've since added Segal, and we've had Blackman, and we have Stewart's Creek, and in 88, we split Smyrna, made, made Laverne appear. Every, every single time without fail, we have had all kinds of rumors and people that were very concerned, they didn't want to go, just whatever, whatever. And in six weeks, you couldn't ply them out of that new school. They loved it. Now, I'm going to predict, based on considerable amount of history and I think some experience, the same thing is going to happen to him. I'll bet you, if, if, if he presents what he's just presented to this board tonight, which is excellent, really, I'm impressed. I, I don't know, I, I would like to alleviate your fears a little bit. I hope, I hope I've done that. I think this is going to work out for you. I'm almost sure it is, but I, obviously, I could be wrong, but I don't, I don't think so.
Any other questions? Have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to uphold the decision.
Have a second.
Okay.
Mr. Todd, Mr. Michael.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Ahn.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Nay.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson. Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
No.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Thank you for your time. We'll see you in court.
Okay, 13th appeal tonight. The Kegel family requests their child to remain at Segal High School instead of Oakland High School. The student is a sophomore, rising sophomore. The parent says the student attended Oakland Middle School and had trouble with other students picking on his daughter. She is currently in the hospitality, travel, and tourism pathway, but that pathway is being dissolved. The student can complete the pathway by taking marketing, which is offered at Oakland High School, and the parent, we've talked about some documentation about some of these things that have happened in the past, and you may have brought that tonight. Thank you. You're welcome. Can you tell me what this is?
Well, I had to write that letter because I can, Oakland Middle cannot release that information to me because it has minors' names and stuff on it, and they said they were going to email the information to you, and I don't know if they have or not.
No, sir.
Okay. But that, I did include the, one of the little girl's names that I know for sure. That was the one we had the main issue with. The first two occasions, Dr. Brewer handled it, and she didn't get the message evidently, so it ended up being handled by the SRO and Mrs. Ferguson.
I will tell you this, Mr. Kegel, the principal at Oakland High School doesn't mess around, and I'm confident that if your child has any issues with another student, that he and his staff will take care of him. I'm certain of that.
Is, is it a possibility that these people went to Segal instead of Oakland?
I haven't had a chance to research this, this is the first time I've seen their names, so I don't know.
But that is a possibility.
It's possible, but since she's coming out of Segal, I think she would know if they were there, so probably not.
The little girl's not at Segal right now, no. She's Oakland.
Oakland Middle?
Oakland High. The issues that happened, happened while she was at Oakland Middle. And I, I just told Charity, I said, "Look, you're going to Segal High next year, it's a non-issue. All you got to do is just, you know, she stays away from you, you stay away from her." So we ended up, and I mean, we've had, Charity's our youngest. She's number five for us, and she's the last one going through Segal. And we've had zone exemptions before. When we first moved out there 20 years ago, we got an exemption for Last Cassus, and we took them to school. They all went to Last Cassus until Oakland Middle opened up. When Oakland Middle opened up, they started attending Oakland Middle, and then we were still zoned for Segal, so they all just went to Segal High. Segal High's done a great job. We've got two that got degrees from MTSU. The third one's on, going on her third year at MTSU. Matthew's starting his college at MTSU this fall.
Mr. Evans, on this, this non-exemption deal?
Yes, sir.
I've got a copy here, the principal's didn't sign it.
So that's correct. The principal's, the parent did not turn in a copy with the principal's signature.
So, he didn't go to the principal's, correct?
Based on what I'm seeing here, that's correct. There could be another copy floating there that has that, but it doesn't appear to.
We, but.
Let me double check again. Oh, I'm, no, I'm sorry.
Mr. Creasy, I believe, signed it.
Oh, there's one in the back.
Yeah, there's one. Principal Oakland didn't.
Yeah, Mr. Creasy said yes, Mr. Marshall said no. Looks like one of the copies in the middle is one that doesn't have the signatures.
Actually, two of them don't have them.
I think you may have not put them in there.
Yeah, it's, it's possibly oversight on my part making the folders, but the third page from the end.
I got the third copy now.
Yep.
Mr. Kegel, your, your students, this is evidently was some years ago, they were, they were re, they were not rezoned, they, they were, they got a zoning exemption to go to Last Cassus, is that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Whenever.
Where were they before, where were they zoned to go?
They were zoned for Walter Hill, but Wal, that was before Wes Wilson Elementary was built. This is back in 99.
Wes, Wes Wilson.
I think he means Wilson Elementary.
Wilson Elementary.
Or Wilson Elementary.
Yeah, okay.
Wilson Elementary.
Okay.
This was before it was built or being built or anything, and we decided we can drive them to Last Cassus. I mean, it's the same distance either way.
Right.
So we took them to Last Cassus.
Okay, so that, well, it says here a zoning exemption. So they got a zoning, you came before the board, and you got a zoning exemption?
To be honest with you, all I had to do was go to Mr. Campbell, him sign it, and go to Mr., trying to remember his name.
Stuart, probably.
Yes, Mr. Stuart.
Yes, sir.
They both signed it. All I had to do was bring it over here. I brought it over here. It was a done deal.
And now you have two at MTSU and two that have graduated from MTSU, and this is number five. You already said that.
Right, yes, sir. She's our youngest one, and Segal's done a great job. They love it over there, have no issues, they do extracurricular stuff.
Okay.
She's on the DECA team. She's the first freshman to make state. So I mean, she's doing really well. She's got straight A's.
She will be a sophomore this fall.
She'll be a sophomore this fall, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the pathway then, and I guess, Mr. Evans, this is a question for you, is she currently in the hospital tourism pathway, maybe Ms. Pilgrim, that pathway's being dissolved, so is that really a non-issue then, at this point?
She can finish it in the marketing program of study.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the classes overlap, and so she can finish it with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No questions, we'll listen to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny the exemption of him.
Motion's been made, denied. Will we have a second?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I couldn't hear, Mr. Young.
Denied. Uphold.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'll second the motion.
We have a second? Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thank you, Ms. Michael. She can call her own.
Mr. Ahn.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, number 14, Ms. Fox is requesting her child to remain at Riverdale High School instead of Rockvale High School. Ms. Fox, please. The student in question is a sophomore. Student has a sibling who was grandfathered, and the parent says the sibling provides transportation to school activities. The mom is concerned about students being on different swim teams and not being able to get children to both. The student also wants to continue maintenance and light repair classes. Rockwell, Rockvale will offer machining classes, which are similar in nature.
So can I assume then that the student, that the sibling is a senior then, and that was the reason for the grandfathering?
Correct. He does. I'm a single mom, so first of all, thank you guys for hearing, I've got to hear everybody, so it's been a very eye-opening experience for me. But I am a single mom, I have no family here, so it's just me and my boys. Luckily, Gabe is, my older he is a huge tremendous help when it comes to transportation to and from things. This year, Elijah joined the swim team for the first time and completely just knocked it out of the park. He was amazing. Almost qualified, he was a, he was fractions of seconds away from qualifying for regionals as a freshman in at least two events, if not three. I know for a fact there was two, I don't remember the exact numbers, but he had two. So I'm so proud of him being able to do that. His older brother also swims as well. Like you had said, I know you had said you had a son that swin, it's a, it's a huge deal because I know they're going to have a swim team. However, they do not have a pool. Therefore, they're going to have to borrow a pool, and to my knowledge, that means that their practices will be sometime after school in the evenings, because Riverdale practices right after school for two hours every day, five days a week. So it's going to have to be after that timeframe. There will be zero way for him to compete and be on the, excuse me, the Rockvale swim team because he will not have transportation. Riverdale County doesn't provide transportation, so for him to be at home, well, his brother's already going to be at swim practice at Riverdale, so he can't, he's not going to be able to get, because he's going to be at home, he'll be at swim practice. I work, I'm a single mother. I work all the time. I do home care for Vanderbilt, so my schedule is different every day of the week. Some days I get off at 3:00, some days I don't get off till 6:00 or 7:00. I also teach yoga in the evenings. So tomorrow, I will leave my house at 6:00 a.m. I will not get home till 7:30 p.m. That's just how it is. Unfortunately, like, I hate to put the burden on my son, but it's help, and it works out well, because again, there's two of them, they go to the same school, everything works out very smooth, it's, it's, it's all right. Elijah does not deserve to be punished and not be able to attend and be on the swim team because he did do such a phenomenal job this year that it would really be unfair to just say, okay, well, tough, you, you know, because you can't get there because of transportation, you just can't be on the swim team. There's not going to be a way for him to do any extracurricular activities, even if it wasn't swimless, if he wanted to choose something else, it's going to be impossible for him to do any after-school activities because of transportation. In addition to that, the maintenance and light repair is something he's been, he's a car guy. He's been a car guy since he was old enough to have a Hot Wheel. He, he's done that. My dad is a mechanic. He has always been out in the garage doing things, you know, whenever we go visit my dad, we go to visit my dad at work so that he can be on the tractor-trailers, and it's just been, he's always been, he's always been into maintenance on vehicles. He wants to be able to build a vehicle at Riverdale. By the time they're a senior, you take maintenance, light repair, each year they add, and they build onto there, so that by the time you're done, you should be able to build a car from the start to the finish, which is what he wants to do for his career. He wants to follow in his papa's footsteps to be able to be a mechanic, to be able to be successful in, you know, his chosen field that he's interested in and get paid to do what he loves, which is what I've told him, I don't care, whatever you want to do, I support you, but you need to find something that you enjoy and figure out how to get paid for it. And that's what he wants to do. And again, the class at Rockvale is not the same. It is not automotive, it is not him building a car, it is not him learning how to maintenance things, it is not learning, him learning how to be a mechanic. It's, it's not the same. So, you know, like I said, I've heard everybody else's stories, I know everybody has their own reasons for the hardships. However, this is, would tremendously punish Elijah and take him out of two things that he loves greatly, just because we live on the wrong side of 231. Oh, and he also has applied, my, my son, my other son sent a letter to apologize, he wanted to be here to support his brother, but he's at work at Sonic, where he has also applied, which, again, he, he gets a job there, he's not going to be able to work there because coming from after school, the Sonic is not going to be an option, because Gabe will come straight after school, he would not be able to do that. So that would also, in, you know, prohibit him from being able to financially be able to better himself moving forward, so.
Our athletic director has not told us yet, and he may not know yet, when Rockvale was going to swim. Do you happen to know?
It's going to be from 7:00, 7:30 to 9:30, I believe, 7:00 to 9:00 or 7:30 to 9:30.
Okay, so you're assuming that he was there, could get there, you're going to have one son swimming from 3:30 to 5:30 roughly, and then you're going to have this fine-looking young man there swimming for two hours after that, right?
Right, but there's no way to provide the transportation.
Well, now, he's going to be driving within eight or 10 months, right? He'll be 16.
He won't be 16 until March of the next year, so it'll be after swim season's over with.
But not his next year or the next year?
Correct. However, unless somebody's going to buy him a car, because again, he can't get to work at Sonic, because if we're not at the same school, then that's going to prevent him from being able to work, is, you know, to earn enough money to buy a car. So that's pending if he can earn enough money to buy his car, because again, there's a reason that I work from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and it's not because I want to. I can promise you that.
Ms. Pilgrim? I want to, I'm going to agree with something you said. Maintenance and light repair is not the same as machining.
Correct. I'm blonde, and I know that.
But if you check into your salaries, they make more money than mechanics.
I'm sure that they do. Well, there's lots of things that make more money, but.
I just want you to know.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I've done both.
Yeah.
I'm aware of that.
Yes.
Do you want?
That's my fault for going off script. It doesn't say that here, and I stuck in that last part. That's, that was my, my misspeak is what that was. Rockvale will offer machining classes, they're not similar, but they will offer them.
You already had one year of the.
Yes, sir, I have maintenance and light repair, MLR 1.
So. And he also changed the windshield wipers and the headlights, and has done some little things around my vehicle that were lovely, that I didn't have to do, because he is starting to get, you know, that basic knowledge of how to do it himself. My dad even got some tools for him, so it's, you know, it's a big deal.
So I do have a question with the transportation concern as far as the swim teams and everything. If, if your older son is swimming from 3:30 to 5:30, and Elijah's going to swim from 7:30 to 9:30, does that not allow enough of a gap for his brother to get him and still get him to the other practice?
After swim, that's what, so he works...
Your older son, okay.
Yes, and that's what I'm saying. So that's the whole thing is like, not that, I mean, they get along. Luckily, I have two boys that are good friends, so like, they want to be swimming together. They want to work together. So after swim practice, Gabe will then go to work, which we were hoping was going to also allow him to have the opportunity to go to work as well. So, so he won't be, I can't rely on him to come back home, pick him up, and then take him back to the school, and then get back, it's just not...
I apologize. I didn't put that together.
So that would, that essentially would essentially keep both of them from working. They might be able to, they, they might be able to do swim, but they both couldn't work. So you're synchronizing that they both go to swim lessons right after school, leave there, and then go work.
Correct. And like I said, of course, the schedule varies, because it's Sonic. They'd never have a set schedule. But like, tonight, Gabe is at work. He works on, you know, it's, it'll be, and they adjust it for the swim, so he'll go in a little bit later during the, during swim season, and then during the regular school year, they adjust where he goes in, like, right after school. So I guess that we're, we, it just, transportation-wise, it, it tremendously inconveniences our whole setup. And unfortunately, I don't have anybody that, again, I know I'm not the only one, but I am, I'm the only one in Murphy'sboro, but my closest relative is three hours away. That's, that's it.
I have a question about the CTE program, and I hate to be redundant, but, so he's essentially in an automotive pathway, and there's nothing like that at Rockville, but what would be the closest thing? I know you already made a statement about it, but...
There really isn't one for the automotive. That's one that we've been kind of, you know, having to look at as far as how far along that they've gone in it. Because machine tool is working with your hands still, and it's, but it's tool and die. It's, it's, it is different.
That was my error, but this student is a freshman, and that's, that's, you know, we mentioned earlier, when we're looking at pathway considerations, we're looking how far along is the student in the pathway. Junior year, for example, and they need one last class to finish. For underclassmen, there are opportunities to change to a different pathway and count that class as elective or something like that. There's not something comparable.
The machine would be the closest thing, but not even really close.
Or, I mean, there's information technology. There's going to be mechanical, electrical plumbing, which may be something similar, which is, you know, it's a lot of the electrical, kind of like electrician stuff and plumbing, and then HVAC. And so that might be something that could be a, but it would be a new program of study, like James said.
Yeah, it's like, that's the difference between house and car. And the same thing with the machine. Like, the machining would be more like the thing that makes the tools that you use to work.
Very familiar.
Right, that is correct.
I really, I really understand. I mean, Rockville is like, it's a lovely school, the whole nine yards. I really understand, but it is, it's just not fair to...
Pilgrim, what's the first course of?
For the automotive program of study.
He's a freshman this year. What did you take this year?
It's the, yeah, maintenance and light repair one. They, it's the, well, it's like you said, they learn how to do the...
You actually get in and do the hands-on?
They do, like, a section this year was like the, the engine, and then they do like electrical, and then like, like it's each. He said that from the time they're freshmen to a senior, they should be able to rebuild an entire car, because each year, they focus on a different, different kind of specialty within a vehicle, within a...
Mr. Evans, and, excuse me, I'm very familiar with the program. I grabbed, my daughter went through it. In fact, she doesn't, she wanted to own her own shop, and she now works on appliances, so it's a very great program. Do we have other students? Would you even know if we have other students who wanted to stay in that program, similar year, another year? I, I think I want to...
I can think of two that we've had that are similar, but they were both juniors. And both principals recommended in favor of it, because they understood the child needed, the student needed one last year to finish the program. They're both in agreement.
Okay.
Those are the two that I recall. Now, there's 1,200 of them, but those are the two.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve exemption.
To approve the transfer.
To stay in the, I would like for him to be able to stay in the mechanics program.
So you're making the motion for both of them to say it's same schedule?
Yes.
Second.
Like Ms. Jordan, motion been made, yes, to overturn this ruling.
I think, I might comment, Mr. Estes.
You're right here.
As much as I hate to vote for the other one, I think there's some, uh, the same scenario as we just had a while ago, but I, I, just my feeling is, I feel like this one's more worthy than the last one. We allowed two exemptions a while ago to go to Rockville, I mean, stay at Riverdale. And here we're talking about one situation, and we've got a single parent versus dual parents. So I would have to agree with, with the motion on the floor, so I'll just put that out there.
Okay, thank you. One else?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't really argue necessarily, certainly not with Mr. Hodge, where I would absolutely lose. But all of this is because we didn't build any swimming pools.
Exactly.
Which I was, by the way, 100% against, building any swimming pools, because of various reasons.
Honestly couldn't.
We're not going to go into right now, but believe me, it's a bad idea. But that's not his fault.
Hey, Ms. Michaels?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Ma'am, you'll get a letter from me, and that's what you'll use for registration.
Thank you guys so much.
All right, our last appeal tonight, Ms. Brown is requesting her child remain at Segal High School instead of attending Oakland High School. It's a sophomore, Ms. Brown. Come on up, please.
So I asked Segal High School where she would be zoned for, and they said Oakland. Well, we just looked at the address, and it's Riverdale now. So the rezoning, hey, and my child don't want to go to Riverdale like everybody else. My child wants to stay at Segal.
Let me say, let me say this part first. It's a sophomore. Family's moving to a new house and wants the student to remain at Segal for the dance and the HOSA team. If you have that address, because I know you're moving, while the board's discussing it, I can be verifying that.
Yes, we just verified it while we were sitting here. So me and my boyfriend are engaged now, so my fiance, and, okay, first of all, I work in Segal District. So it's convenient for me to stay with her status.
Can I interrupt real quick? James, I don't know if we can, we can, without him filling out a zoning exemption and having both principals...
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Because I know that...
Well, what we, what I'm going to suggest that we do, since she, if you know she's zoned for Riverdale, okay...
I gotta come back and sit again all night?
Well, we can come back the 20th. It's not that many on the 20th.
They say the best for last, but, you know, I should have stood up and said, "Hey, I don't think I have to be here tonight." Because once I realized it was for Riverdale, then I knew that the lady at the front office, I guess that rezoning messed everything up. So when I asked the lady at the front office, it was Oakland, and now it's Riverdale.
I'm, like I said, I'm double checking that. Give me just one second, please.
But after all this, I'm like, is it even worth going through all this with the questions and all that?
But the point here is that if, if both principals recommend in favor of it, you have a better chance. And we haven't, if you are zoned for Riverdale, we haven't received the recommendation from the correct principal yet.
Correct.
So, but I, I should have this in just a second.
Then we guarantee you'll be last.
Yeah, so I'll get her about 8:30.
Okay, so this address is now zoned for, for Riverdale. It was zoned for Oakland before the rezoning.
Yes.
That's probably where the confusion is.
Yes.
You got a zoning exemption for her right now?
Yes, sir, I'll get her one, absolutely.
So I need you to take it.
We'll get Mr. Creasy to sign it. The, the high school principals are still there.
They are?
You'll get Mr. Creasy to sign it, and Mr. Nance to sign it at the Riverdale, and bring it back to me, and we will consider that. If you'll hang around just for a few more minutes, I'll get that for you.
What's another, or amongst friends? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so for the 20th meeting, we have two that I know of that are already had requested appeals, and then the additional two that were postponed at that meeting tonight. I will have all that information for you all at the work session meeting next Tuesday. Anything that I find out, I'll let you know. In the meantime, if you have questions, let me know, please.
That'll be a total of five, correct?
Four. Two and two. Now, we did have a couple of appeals that got turned down about a week ago, so they're still within the window they could request, but within, the window's shrinking rapidly, so hopefully that's all of them.
I got three that's going to the 20th. Number three, number five, number 15.
Oh, number 15, not, doesn't necessarily have to come back to the board. If both principals agree to it, that's the one we just heard. Yes, that's correct.
All right, we'll be adjourned in to Director's Conference Room.